Okay, good morning. Welcome, everybody, to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission Meeting. We're glad you're joining us, those that are joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you wonderful people joining us here in person. Don't be alarmed, what's falling from the sky today is called rain, and we need a lot of it, so we're glad you're joining us on a rainy Wednesday morning. When you walked in, you could have got a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to grab those and to follow along with the meeting. If you have any questions about any of the documents that the commissioners are reviewing and making these decisions, and all of these motions, and all of this discussion, you can always access that at sedgwickcounty.org. I do want to acknowledge, we're going to move some things around a little bit this morning. We do have some public comments on a couple different variety of topics. One of the topics is actually going to be an item on our consent agenda, item AE. It's a plating issue. There's been discussion with Commissioner Wise. She's going to pull that item from the consent agenda, and we're actually going to move that up in the in the in the meeting today. So if you'll take a peek at your, that way everybody's following on the same page. After item P and before item Q of new business, we're going to move the consent agenda up there so that people don't have to wait all day to visit with us on that specific item. And we're also going to give an opportunity to provide some public comment on that item. So if you signed up for public comment, you can either do it during the public comment section early in the meeting, or you can wait until that specific item, and we'll call and allow you to speak at that item as well. So it's all concise and at the same time period. So I'll remind you when we get there, but want to make sure everybody's on the same page. We will be moving the agenda around just a little bit today to accommodate those that are joining us. One last thing before we begin. Want to acknowledge, we always like to acknowledge people that are joining us today. The mayor of Goddard is here, George Lee. Welcome, sir. We're glad you're joining us today. Always welcome here at the county commission meetings. Okay, a lot of work to get done. Let's get to it. I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, May the 7th, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
In vocation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Blueball.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner, Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Hey, good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. We're going to start off with the Register of Deeds Office. I have Kinley Ziering here. She's the chief deputy, and she's going to give an update on the new property fraud alert system that began in February. Ma'am?
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Kinley Ziering, Chief Deputy Registered Deeds. I'm here to talk about our property fraud alert program. This is a free service. You get notified by mail, text, or email, and it notifies you with any documents that were filed via deed, mortgage, lien, easement, or anything recorded with your personal or business name. While it can't prevent fraud, it is an early warning system so you can respond quickly if suspicious activity is detected. We launched our new platform in February of 2025 this year, and anyone that was previously enrolled with the property activity alert prior to that is encouraged to re-register for the new program. All you have to do is go to our website on the Sedgwick County Registered Deeds, enter in your personal or business name. You can also enter in your trust name and your contact information, and you will receive those alerts. We encourage everyone to sign up and help safeguard both your home and business property.
Kinley, very good. Maybe a couple of questions.
Sure.
How often, I mean, how common? Fraud is a common thing that we deal with in society today. How common is it to have fraud on a property or a title or a deed, or someone trying to sneak in and get their name on some items? How common is this?
We haven't seen anything lately, but, you know, a couple of years back, we had a prisoner trying to deed over Joyland, so it's something that you want to keep, you know, an eye on, and this service is free and it's easy to sign up, so.
Deed over Joyland. A couple of questions. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for doing this, and it is, I know it's kind of been on in the news, and it's on commercials about somebody taking over your property. So again, this is free and it's easy, because I just did it about two weeks ago. I walked in, it took about a minute and a half. They look up your property, and they just label it that it's on alert if there's anybody comes in and tries to mess with your mess with your property. And so I encourage Commissioner Blueball to do this, since he's got like 80 properties.
We definitely did that for like our rental properties, too, so.
Right. Okay, anyway, thank you, and thanks, Communications, for publishing this and getting the word out best we can.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, I guess, dovetail on the previous comment. You said this is free, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, you know, I don't know exactly, I never have done it, but I've heard the commercials, and I don't know what they offer exactly, but I know that's fairly expensive. Do you know, are they doing something specifically that's in addition to what we get for free through this service? Do you know?
I don't know offhand. I know that a couple of us have called up there and received vague answers. I know they support some type of legal process, but you can also do that on your own here in Sedgwick County.
I would assume this works similarly to the previous program. I don't know that there's any significant differences from the from the homeowner's perspective, but I had signed up before. I would say over the last numbers of years that I've had that service, I have received just a couple, two or three notifications. I was able to then talk to someone in your in your staff or log in and see if there's anything I need to worry about, and I was comforted to know that there was nothing, no one stole my house or my title. So to me, it was a great service to know something happened, but it wasn't anything to worry about, and it was understandable when I asked someone to explain what happened. So I do thank you. Thank you for providing this free service. It is a great opportunity for people to protect their property. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good. Kinley, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Sedgwick County is proud to announce the launch of the 2026 Budget Simulator. This is an interactive hands-on tool that encourages citizens to explore and influence how your tax dollars are budgeted and what it takes to balance important needs like public safety, roads, and community services. From now through May 23, we invite you to help us prioritize our funding and resources for next year's budget. Simply go to sedgwickcounty.org/budgetsimulator. This is also on social media, and you can find it on our website. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, wonderful. Commissioner Blueball.
Thank you, Chairman. Just had a question on the Budget Simulator. I've had a few people try it. They like it, but some people are like, wow, this makes me balance the whole budget, and it takes some time, and they realize, you know, you're not just going to whip right through it. Is there an abbreviated version if they just want to splat feedback out there without going through? Because I've been told it probably takes 30 minutes. Maybe you can tell me, maybe it's a little bit faster than that?
I think it depends. That's a great question, sir. I think it depends on how much time someone is willing to give to it. For me, when I went through it personally, I was in it maybe about five minutes. However, I was deeply involved in the process. So, you know, it goes both ways. In regards to a short feedback process, we don't have one right now. However, when the recommended budget is given in July, we do have an opportunity for folks to submit comment during that time.
Okay.
And so that is an abbreviated version, per se, but not necessarily for the simulator.
Okay. Thank you for all you did with that. I'm excited to see what.
Yes, me too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wondering, on the May 14 meeting, can you provide, if you will, an update in how many people have gotten on there and completed a process or found a way to balance the budget? I'd like to just kind of get some feedback on how well this has been utilized by our public. Could be great to encourage, I guess, greater participation, but it might be good to have a snapshot on how it's been used up to that point, if that's okay.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Good suggestion. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Nicole, as usual, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay, we have several people signed up for public agenda. Again, if you would like to speak on item AE, we'll give you an opportunity. You're welcome to speak at this moment, or if you want to wait until we call that item, we're also going to provide an opportunity to speak at that point, too. So whatever is most convenient for you. What we'll do is when we call your name, we'll ask you to come down to the podium. Our friendly county clerk will give you five minutes. If you can state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it. So first up, Amanda Treadwell. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. I'm glad to hear I have five minutes. I prepared three minutes, so that fills me to breathe. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for your leadership as you begin what I know will be a challenging and important budget discussions and budget season. My name is Amanda Treadwell. I have the honor of serving as the volunteer director of the Goddard Senior Center since we opened in 2024. I also serve as the chairwoman of the newly formed Goddard Senior Citizens Advisory Board. There's more to share than that I can fit in three minutes, so I offer this as a beginning of ongoing conversation and hope to continue with each of you individually. I'm here today for two key requests. First, please consider increasing funding for senior centers in 2025 budget, particularly for the Goddard Senior Center, where we're working hard to close the growing service and resource gap in western Sedgwick County, especially in District 3. Second, as you explore reforming the senior center funding model, I urge you to collaborate with frontline directors like myself who bring firsthand experience, local data, practical insight, and essential tools that are central tools for designing stronger, more sustainable systems, with ultimately saving our taxpayers' dollars. Senior centers are not just social spaces. They are proactive, we are proactive boots-on-the-ground resource hubs of connection, care, and crisis prevention. I've lost count how many times I've been told you've saved my life. We reduce isolation and increase activity, purpose, and belonging. We connect our seniors to each other into vital resources that protect their health, safety, and independence. Just last month, two of our 80-year-old widow members who met through friendship mills found love and were married in Goddard. That's the kind of life-changing impact we're having, and you can read all about it in this month's Active Age. Since opening in 2024, just shy of one year, our Goddard Senior Center has grown from 59 to 528 members as of yesterday. That's a 795% increase in less than a year. We've expanded services, experiences month over month, launched Mills on Wheels and Friendship Mills, and built momentum thanks to more than 100 volunteers, generous private donations, creative partnerships, and full support from the Goddard City Council and staff. We continue to attract 20 to 50 new members each month. Today, more than 1,000 residents age 55 and older live in the city of Goddard, nearly 9,700 in the Goddard School District. With 54 housing developments either underway or planned, including 23 just inside of our city limits, the demand for services will only grow. Now we are asking for more of your help to sustain and scale what we have built through equitable funding that reflects the area we serve and the growing need. It's time to modernize the funding formula for 2026 and beyond. The current model doesn't reflect the vital, life-changing work that senior centers do and the rising needs of today's aging population. I would welcome the opportunity for to meet with you individually and participate in a workshop with other senior leaders, senior leaders, to help shape a more equitable, impactful future for senior centers and seniors across Sedgwick County. Finally, I invite you to visit the Goddard Senior Center and follow us on our Facebook on Goddard Senior Connection to see the impact firsthand. I thank you for your time, your attention, and your commitment to serving seniors now and the future generations in our community.
Yeah, very good. Okay, Amanda, thank you. One moment, please. Commissioner Blueball.
Thank you, Chairman, and I appreciate everything that you're doing out there. I was thinking exactly the same thing as all the developments and stuff going. I think the seniors, you know, we're going to see a lot more seniors out there as well, and I appreciate all the advocating you're doing, and I'm anxious to get over there and go through the building. So thank you for all you're doing for advocacy.
Okay, Commissioner Wise.
Amanda, thank you. Your volunteer hours are incredible in Goddard, not just for the senior center, but for fundraisers, car shows, you're involved in all of it. So I want to just thank you for being a good citizen, for being a leader, and for dedicating your time, and you've built so much success out there. So thanks for bringing this. I wanted all of the other Commissioners to hear just how much you're doing out in Goddard and growing that senior center.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Amanda, for your comments, and I've been trying to, I guess, challenge our commission for a number of years to really review how we deal with our senior funding, and that includes senior centers. But a couple of quick questions. So where do you guys meet as a senior center? Where's your location in your city?
We meet at the Goddard Community Center. So it's a shared facility with our community.
Who owns that facility?
City of Goddard.
Okay, and they let you guys use that for free?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And do they also cover things like the janitorial and things like that?
Yes.
They do? Good. Do they also provide some cash, some budget help from their own budget to help support this as well?
Yes. In 2025, our funding grant request for 6,000 stayed the same, and so the city of Goddard stepped up and gave us $46,000 for 2025.
So 46 from Goddard, and how much from the county?
6,000.
6,000.
Where we're currently funded.
So just to let you know, I think that that means that we call it a brand-new startup club or a senior organization. We call that a club until there's performance measures. And you mentioned the formula needs to be reconsidered and make it more equitable. I would just say right now, currently, we don't have a formula. We're still kind of referring to the old formula, which took years to make, and it's based on performance measures of what's already happened. It's not perspective. It's based on what's been done in the past. So based on what you can do, it would drive forward, you know, a different consideration for different levels of funding based on what's already happened. But against, there's no history there. I'm sure they started at the lowest number. But the fact that there was actually a new a new senior club is actually very noteworthy, because most of our senior centers have been static or have have, some have even closed, and very few of them have received any additional funding. We did, I think we increased a few of them last year after about, I think, four, five, six years of advocacy. We finally got a few of them, increased a small amount, and according to the old formula, which we don't have anymore, they would have been deserving of that increase in funding quite a bit prior to when they did get that. So anyway, it is a it is a big topic, and I always refer to the, you know, we have a zoo today because there was a ballot question, and it gives us a mandate to have a zoo. We have a mill levy that supports the zoo. We have a very similar mill levy to support our seniors, and that passed, I think, in 1982, I believe. And I have a lot of documentation about the history around that ballot question, but the people voted. It was a two-to-one result on the ballot results that said we have a mandate not from the people to actually, if you will, to assess the mill levy to support these types of programs. And so I think we have a mandate, and I think we ought to have that discussion again. You know, we have a new commission today. I'm sure the discussions will be very interesting going forward. But thank you for your time to, thank you for your time in advocating the way you have today. I would love to come out there and visit you guys. Thank you so much.
Just to clarify, if I can, the our senior center started as a senior group three years ago. We were funded at 6,000 for the last three years, and it started at 20 members, and then it went to 59. And then when I took it over last year is where we grew up, from 59 to where we are today. So.
That's great. Thank you for clarifying.
So we'll have, in this year, we'll have two years full of performing at the higher level.
Very good. And are you using the county-provided membership tools as a PC-based?
No, because that required a $5,000 investment that would have been all of our budget.
We need to get that implemented there. All right, thank you again for your comments.
Thank you.
Amanda, thank you. It sounds like you're doing wonderful things. I've driven by you guys' center a few times. I'm in Goddard rather frequently, but, you know, the discussion on senior centers and how they play and their role of things, this is a conversation that continues up here. We do about, I'm estimating about $14 million a year for aging services in our aging department. Senior centers is a part of that. Before my time on the commission, the commission chose to freeze the formula that was standing at the time. And I think the conversation now is our previous director of the aging department, Annette Graham, retired here just recently, and as we hire a new director, I think the conversation on the funding formula and what that looks like, is there a block grant opportunity? I think that conversation's going to kick back into gear. And I think there's a couple of different strategies we can deploy, but I know the senior centers are a big part of our aging services, and what you do there is really, really important to the community. So the conversation won't stop here at the commission. We appreciate all that you're doing.
I appreciate you all. Just.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, Mayor George Lee.
Good morning, Chair, council members, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to visit Goddard Senior Center and some of the things that are going on in Goddard. I would mention, in addition to Amanda's volunteer efforts, she was recognized with another lady, Karen Keatley, as our Volunteers of the Year last year for 2025, and the community does really appreciate her volunteer efforts, plus the group of people that are surrounding her, that never-growing group of volunteers, that's helping to keep Meals on Wheels, Friendship Meals, operating on a daily basis in the community. I've had an opportunity a couple times to deliver meals, and, you know, there are people in our community that that might be the only human contact that they receive, you know, that day. So it's been interesting just to share and have conversations with people, and I know that those people appreciate that effort. We did, last year, as part of our budget process, increase our funding, or actually, for the first time, you know, provide the funding that Amanda talked about. You know, a lot of times, when communities our size say we don't have money for that, we're really saying it's not a priority to us. And as our community is growing and changing with the new leadership we have in place, this has become a priority. We just were recently awarded, what is it, a 5310 grant for a van. Amanda, I think, has tagged that as kind of the beginnings of Goddard go, and, you know, be able to provide transportation to get maybe some people that couldn't get to some of these activities to get there. It's it's also a part of kind of a greater process of maybe being seen as a hub for services in western Sedgwick County. For the first time, probably in a long time, we had a meeting with the seven mayors and administrators of western Sedgwick County, who I let only refer to as the Seven Little Dwarf Mayors. Stephanie Wise is our Cinderella, so we hopefully can advocate and work together, though.
That's good.
That way people remember that. But we can work together to provide services and to share some of these meals. Some of the activities that are included in the senior center, a couple times a month, a group goes over to Cheney and they go bowling. There's now a traveling trophy. If you guys want to come out and bowl with me sometime, we'll kind of see if you can carry the traveling trophy for a week. Of course, the week I go over and bowl, they change the schedule, and I bowl by myself. But I just think that the interaction within the community, the volunteerism, the attitude and the acceptance that that creates for people, new people moving into the region. We did approve a senior duplex development for seniors, 88 units, a Schellenberger's development north of Maple. We're in the process of a tenure CIP, trying to plan your budget thing. You know, we could probably use that, too. But we did add the senior center as one of the possible projects to be included with the police station and public works, all the things you run through and trying to run a city. But I'm appreciative of the support we see from the county and the working relationship we have, and I think western Sedgwick County and Goddard's better, best days are still ahead of us. So that will entertain any comments or questions, or I'll go sit down.
Very good. Mayor, thank you so much. Appreciate you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We haven't talked in a little while, so thank you for being here today. You know, I heard, I think I heard in the news somewhere, I should have looked it up real quickly, and this may not be the right source, but it says on underworldpopulationsreview.com, you know, there are a number of cities in Sedgwick County that are growing very quickly, and Goddard is actually number five on this list of Kansas cities. We have two other cities ahead of you in Sedgwick County, it'd be Mays and Bel Air, according to this, and then behind you is Mulvane, and believe it or not, 23rd on the list is Derby. So there's a lot of growth there. It talks about a 3.27% over one year and about 20% over five years. Does that sound right?
Based on some of the studies that have been done, not only within the city, but the school districts generated past a bond issue, there's, in the school district, they've identified 54 projects, developments, either in planning or that have been plotted. I know within Goddard itself, we've got 12 now, maybe 13 with what we just added here last week. If we if we go ahead and build everything out, don't do another thing, our population would project out to be a little over 11,000. So and the march of the growth is at Goddard's doorstep. I mean, 27 years ago, when I moved out there, you could say you were out there, but we're not anymore. So the amount of traffic, the school issues, the growth issues, we are, you know, kind of right there, and I think it's going to continue. One of the things I'm really proud about is, as you look out of the 97 class two cities, Goddard's property tax ranks like eighth or ninth. So there are only seven other communities that have lower property taxes than we have in Goddard, and that's really attributed to the ones in sales tax that we have. So with that growth, we've also been able to project here in the next few years that we have funds available to do some of these things without maybe increasing taxes a great deal, which is, I think, music to the ears of all the citizens that are struggling with trying to make payments and try to feed their families.
Well, I've talked to a lot of people. I know I know some people who are actually moving to Goddard because it's a thriving city, and I know that I think that the bond issue, with a lot of young families, I would expect that probably will pass, is my guess, but we'll see what happens.
I would think so, yeah.
And then, and then, of course, when the senior, the senior population, you're taking care of them as well. I think Amanda's report was really, really encouraging. So you're covering both ends of the spectrum there. So you must be doing something right. I attribute this growth to good leadership, and that means you're doing a good job. And then I guess I have one more question. The housing out there, you're building a lot of dwelling units, and I'm curious about two things. Number one, how many dwelling units are basically in the pipeline right now and with respect to the apartment complexes or whatever, near the near that? We did not agree to it, but there was an incentive package on the table, and there was some question about whether that would or would not happen. Just give us an update, whether that is or not, is or is not happening, and how many dwelling units are being constructed currently that you know of?
I haven't updated all my numbers for the last three months, but we have approximately 1,100 lots plotted for single-family development, another 400 plotted for duplexes. So, you know, that's basically 800, 800 units, so almost, you know, 1,800 living units. That is include the recently added Schellenberger addition. We did recently approve some industrial revenue on financing, extended some of those terms to get the apartment complex, they burned ground here last week.
It's moving forward, yes.
So with that, and then we do have a couple other potential apartment complexes. We recently approved a 33 small development for single-family housing in a starter range of 200,000. It's hard to say that starter range in 200,000, but.
Okay, that's all.
So we are working to try to fill all those different gaps that we've had. So hopefully here in the next two or three years, the inventory will round out and provide more opportunities.
I don't need you up any more time. I just want to get that on the record, but thank you for.
No, I appreciate for doing that.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Wise.
Mayor, thank you for coming. I enjoy working alongside you, and we get to talk about roads and how to get out to Goddard faster and easier for all of our sports families like Chairman Beatty. Goddard has been, you know, my home. That's where like Chairman Beatty. Goddard has been, you know, my home. That's where I went to school. Great people come out of Goddard, right?
Yes, exactly.
Tell us, so Commissioner Howell asked a lot about the residential side of what you guys are doing to attract and really keep up with the growth on the residential side of, of the city. But what are you guys doing? And I know, I'm, I'm leading into something I already know about, but what are you guys doing to incentivize businesses to come out to Goddard and, and really grow that basis as well as your, as your growing population that, that will follow? So do you have any, anything that you're doing to work with commercial users to come out there?
Sure. We've, a couple of things. One, we've, we've hired a consultant to, to interact nationally with, you know, different chains. We've sent our, we've sent some staff to national, a couple of national conventions. I think we announced, it showed up in the Wichita Business Journal, that Casey's is finally going to be breaking ground just east of 183rd Street. There's a couple of other, you know, we're willing, on the things that we need, to provide incentives in terms of tax abatements, all the things that cities can do to, to incent and, and attract new businesses. So we did recently, I guess it would have been Monday night, we annexed 60 acres out on 215th Street, which would be a nice commercial business, which I'm not going to say what it is, because all the i's aren't dotted and the t's haven't been crossed on it. But, but there's active efforts within our staff to try to entertain and, and, and work with not only the commercial or the residential development, but also trying to develop and find businesses. Everybody wanted a restaurant, and we have a sand, the sandbox opened up. We should have a Mexican restaurant. They're in the process of rehabbing one of the buildings out on the highway. So it's, I, I just believe that in the five years, the landscape of Goddard and the commercial development will be a lot different. And that Chairman will have a lot more opportunities to find places to eat during those ballgames if you're out there this summer, so.
We're frequent at the Sonic, Mayor.
I'm sure.
Well, thank you. And thank you for your leadership. Goddard's in good hands, and your experience and your background is, is proving to be very valuable.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Mayor, grateful for you, sir. Thank you so much for coming.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
All right. The rest of the individuals that have signed up, there are five other individuals signed up for public comment. It's all on the item AE. It's the Saddle Ridge Plating. Would you like to speak now? You're welcome to speak now. Or if you'd like to wait, we'll give you an opportunity to speak at that line item. Okay, we'll wait. Okay, good. Okay. That concludes public comment. I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of April 16th, 2025.
Okay, commissioners, if you look at items A and B, all commissioners were present. So without objection, I'll combine items A and B into one motion.
Second.
Okay. Well, let me make the motion. So I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 16th and the regular meeting minutes of April 23rd, 2025.
Second.
Got it. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring Provider Appreciation Day.
Okay. We have four proclamations today. Wonderful proclamations. I've asked Commissioner Wise to read this proclamation.
It's my honor to read this proclamation. Okay, so whereas Provider Appreciation. Provider Appreciation Day is a national observance celebrated annually. This special day is dedicated to recognizing the remarkable efforts of childcare professionals who play a critical role in supporting the development, learning, and well-being of young children and their families. And whereas, those professionals provide nurturing, safe, and stimulating environments that help children grow socially, emotionally, and academically during their most formative years. And whereas, Provider Appreciation Day is a time for families, communities, and organizations to express gratitude for their hard work, dedication, and impact, often behind the scenes and without widespread recognition. And whereas, the day also serves as a reminder of the importance of investing in early childhood education and care, and supporting those who dedicate their careers to shaping the future, one child at a time. And whereas, Cedric County recognizes that childcare has been a lifetime or a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy. And now, now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby recognize May 9th, 2025 as Provider Appreciation Day. And all citizens are encouraged to actively support and honor the invaluable contributions of childcare providers. By investing time, resources, and advocacy efforts, residents can help ensure that early childhood professionals receive the recognition and support they deserve, thereby strengthening the foundation of our community's future. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Okay. And to accept this proclamation is Mandy Waugh, Child Start. I think she's here. Yep, coming on up. Mandy, thank you.
Good morning, county commissioners. My name is Mandy Waugh. I'm the Early Childhood Connections Program Director at Child Start. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning as we take time to recognize an essential group in our community, our childcare providers. May 9th is Child Care Appreciation Day, a meaningful occasion dedicated to honoring the early childhood professionals who make a lasting difference in the lives of children and families every day. These individuals are often a steady presence in a child's day, welcoming them with care in the morning and providing comfort and encouragement until day's end. Childcare providers serve in many roles, educators, nurturers, guides, and trusted partners to families. Their influence goes far beyond daily routines. They help children grow emotionally, socially, and intellectually during the most critical years of development. They are instrumental in building strong foundations for lifelong learning and well-being. Their work also enables parents and guardians to engage fully in the workforce, pursue educational goals, and support their families, making early care and education a key part of our community's strength and stability. Today, we expressed our deep appreciation, not just with words, but through our continued commitment to supporting this vital profession. By investing in our providers, we invest in stronger families, and a more resilient workforce, and a brighter future for all. To all childcare providers, your dedication matters, your work changes lives, and your contributions do not go unnoticed. Thank you for all that you do.
Very good. Mandy, thank you so much. Commissioner, any questions or comments? I would just say, part of that proclamation that you mentioned, there's two factors here. And when we talk, we talk about childcare and all the work these providers do. The first is just healthy families and healthy children.
Yes.
What it means to nurture and love and protect, and to provide for these children. The other is the economic component of this. I don't know what the data, I've heard, I've seen some data recently. I'm not sure it's confirmed, but just how many working families are dependent on childcare.
Yes.
And if we don't have widely accessible, widely affordable childcare, there's an economic impact in our community.
Absolutely.
So the work that you guys do, just for our children, our community's children, but also for our economy, that's what this proclamation, that's why this is important today, that we acknowledge this and all the work that you guys are doing. There's big projects in the works, too. I know there's a lot of talk and a lot of fundamental reforms happening in your space that I'm really, really excited for. And I know a lot of young families are too, so.
Thank you.
Bless you guys. Appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Before we move on, the four proclamations, if you wouldn't mind holding on till we get through all four, we want to take some pictures and celebrate you. So when we get through all four, we'll just go right out here on the stairs and take a quick five-minute break and take some pictures to acknowledge you guys, okay? All right. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, proclamation declaring Police Week.
Okay. I am pleased to read this proclamation of Cedric County, Kansas. Whereas, in 1962, the United States Congress first passed Public Law 87-726, designating May 15th of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, honoring federal, state, and local peace officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty, and the corresponding week as Police Week. And whereas, over the years, devoted law enforcement officers from all over the United States of America have courageously sacrificed their personal safety while working on behalf of the people. And whereas, because of their steadfast efforts to enforce our laws, we as citizens can enjoy a system of peace and order. And whereas, Cedric County desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of not only its own sheriff's deputies, but peace officers everywhere. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan Beatty, and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 11th through the 17th, 2025 as Police Week. We declare this in Cedric County and call upon our citizens to show their sincere appreciation for the many law enforcement officers of Cedric County, past and present, and their legacy of humble, dedicated service to the community. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I move to approve it as read.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. I'm here to accept this proclamation as our very own sheriff, Jeff Easter.
Good morning, commissioners. We appreciate the proclamation. And remember, we, the reason we do this is because of the men and women that have given their lives protecting this community and the citizens of Cedric County. So it's very special every year that next week is Police Week. You know, we'll honor those men and women over at the memorial next Thursday. Next Wednesday, you're all invited. We will be having a barbecue in appreciation for all of our staff. That includes, I know you're getting ready to read the Corrections Week as well, and you probably only want to see my face once, so. But, you know, that goes for our corrections staff, too, our detention deputies. They do a wonderful job in there, and it's not an easy job. And so we appreciate every year that you guys acknowledge both those groups. So thank you very much.
Sheriff, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Sheriff, I would just acknowledge a couple of things. Number one, in my family, we have a lot of law enforcement officers. And I know the sacrifice that your deputies make and, and all police officers and those in law enforcement make, but there's a sacrifice for the family, too. Not just in time, but also in anxiousness. You guys do tough jobs. You do jobs that are incredibly important. The stability and the safety of this community rides upon your shoulders in many regards. And so I want to also, I want to acknowledge not only the people that are working in law enforcement, I want to acknowledge their families, too. And I think it's really important that we, that we acknowledge the sacrifices that they make. Secondly, I want to thank you for the service and the, and the leadership you provide to the sheriff's office. When I first got on the county commission, you were down over 120 deputies in your department. And last count, I think you're only down about a handful now. That's because of the way you have led your department. That's because of the tenacity of the people that work in your department, your sheriff deputies. Many of them I know and see out and about, and I see them in the community. But it's because you advocate for your department, too, and, and the people that work for you. So you're the elected sheriff of this county, and I'm on record as saying, I think we got one of the best. So I'm grateful for all the work you do and all the work of your deputies and, and the safety you provide to this community. So thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, proclamation declaring Correctional Officers Week.
I've asked Commissioner Bluebaugh to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas in 1984, then-President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week, the first full week in May has since been recognized as National Correction Officers Week to honor the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel nationwide. And whereas, the dedication of these correctional officers and detention deputies who serve our community quietly take on a very difficult and dangerous duties. And whereas, we would be unable to operate our adult and juvenile detention facilities and community correctional programs without the hard work of these professionals that staff these facilities 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And whereas, Cedric County is pleased to join in celebrating Correctional Officers Week, recognizing these men and women who risked their lives and served so diligently and faithfully. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025 as Correctional Officers Week in Cedric County. And we encourage all citizens to honor and show sincere appreciation for the correctional officers who make it possible to keep the detention and correctional facilities safe each day. And I'd like to motion or move that we approve this proclamation.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And this proclamation will be accepted by Sheriff Easter and Steve Stonehouse and Lori Gibbs from Cedric County Corrections.
Okay. Hi, Lori.
Hey, good morning, chairman and commissioners. I'm Lori Gibbs, Deputy Director of the Adult Corrections Programs. We appreciate the commission recognizing this week in May as National Corrections Officer Week. Each year, we set aside time to recognize the hard work of frontline staff working in our corrections facilities. Today, we have staff from several of those facilities here to receive this recognition on behalf of everyone else who could not be here today. Would each of you introduce yourselves?
Yes.
And let everybody know where you work and how long you work for the county.
My name is Iris Fletcher. I'm Corrections Officer at Ares, and I've been with the department for nine months.
Oh, great.
My, my name is Jonathan Deuter. I work at Adult Residential Corrections Officer. I've been with the county for 11 months.
My name is Shania Cook. I'm at the Juvenile Residential Facility. I'm a lead corrections officer there. And I've been there for two years.
My name is Billy Buckner. I've been at the juvenile detention for 16 years. I'm the corrections supervisor in first shift.
All right, all right.
Thank you again for recognizing the hard work of all these staff. We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you, Lori. Commissioner, any questions or comments? I would just say, Lori, I know Steve Stonehouse is sitting there, Director Lori. I, I just want to thank you publicly for all the work that you do. The accountability that comes within your programs, the corrections programs, the detention facilities, but also the grace that you give. I know, and we talk and we meet, we talk a lot about getting the supports in the system to reduce recidivism. For many of these individuals, we'll be returning to our communities. We want to return them to our communities healthier, more professional, engaged in the community, to where they don't return back into the corrections environment, into our detention facility. So the work that you do is instrumental to the safety of this community and the health of this community. So just want to publicly thank all the work that you do. And also acknowledge, and the juvenile folks, as you know, that we've been talking a lot about a juvenile campus project here, that we're going to try to get more supports, particularly at juvenile residential facility, to bring the community partners into your facility to help you with your work. These are conversations we've been having. There's a CIP, there's things that we're working on, and working on the final designs of these things. But the supports are coming in a big way because of the work that you guys do. So we're grateful for everything. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Lori, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for providing the tour and all the information you have. I appreciate what you guys are doing. And just like the chairman was saying, you're, you're doing everything for rehabilitation and actually keep people out of our jail. And, and I appreciate your efforts, and I'm thank you for all you guys are doing.
Yes. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, three of you are somewhat new to the county. One of you have been here a very long time. You know, I'm so proud of you for choosing Cedric County and being, you know, working, working to help our county be as good as we can be. I think that corrections is our greatest, one of our greatest opportunities. As we transition people who have been in, in the system one way or the other, and transition them safely into the community so they can be successful, is really, I think, one of our missions and goals of everything that you guys are involved in. And I would tell you, I think our greatest opportunity especially is on the juvenile side. And I have a real heart for these kids. I think we, we need to do as much as we can to, to help them make the best decisions. And so I just want to say thank you personally for what you do. And it means, it means the world to have good people mentor them and help them in a very personal way. So thank you. I, it's not, I feel like you have not been recognized nearly enough. So that's why I think today's a big day to get you and all your team members a recognition for what you do. So really very important work. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you again. Appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F.
Oh, whoa, yeah. I, forgive me, Lori. I should have motioned for a hand clap. I didn't, I thought we already did. Forgive me. Okay, that was well deserved. Madam, Madam Clerk, we got a second for the hand clap. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, proclamation declaring Older Americans Month.
Okay, we've asked Commissioner Howell to read this proclamation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering why you asked me, but I guess maybe I'm the older American. Looking at Pete, but he looks younger than me do, so I guess I'm the guy. I have more gray hair. Mr. Chairman, please read this for everyone today. It says, whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize, honor, and highlight older, older Ameri, I'm sorry, and advocate for corrections to ensure that we all can thrive as we age. And whereas, our communities are better when they include the full scope of our energy, including contributions of older people. And whereas, aging is a dynamic process that leads to new abilities and knowledge that we can share with our communities. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live in deep the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Sedgwick County must ensure that older, older adults have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, highlighting purposeful opportunities for engagement and, and connections. And whereas this year's theme, Flip the Script on Aging, encourages the transformation of how Sedgwick County communities perceive, talk about, and approach aging. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Older Americans Month, and call upon all residents to join in honoring older adults' contributions, challenging the stereotypes, and dispelling misconceptions, and exploring many opportunity, opportunities for staying active and engaged as we age. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to read that. I would make a motion that we would adopt this proclamation.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And to receive this today, we have Kim Landers, who's the Chair of the Sedgwick County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council.
Yes. There you go. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you. As you said, my name is Kim Landers. I serve as the President of the Sedgwick County Aging and Physical Disabilities Board. We appreciate the proclamation that you've made, recognizing May as Older Americans Month. Thank you for the support that you have given the aging community. The Sedgwick County Aging and Physical Disability Department strives to meet the needs of the aging population that live in Sedgwick County. They do this through innovative actions that not only meet, but exceed expectations. The aging community has benefited from many award-winning ideas that have, that they have developed. Thank you again for your support with the proclamation of May as Older Americans Month.
Yep, very good. Okay, very good. Kim, thank you so much for being here. Manager Stoltz and I are actually talking about getting on a regular schedule to have a lot of our advisory boards, Aging and IDD included, to come give either a, twice a year, maybe even a quarterly update to let us know exactly all the things that you're working on. So, these are conversations that we're having, trying to work with all of the, we have over 30 advisory boards here at the county, and trying to figure out schedules that work with leadership. So, we'll be in contact pretty soon to have you come over and give a formal update about all the things that you're working on, because what you do is consequential to the health of the community. So, thank you for being here, and congratulations on the proclamation.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, four wonderful proclamations. If we could take just a five-minute break, we're going to go out here on the steps, take
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, thank you again Shannon. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item I, accept the resignation of Kim Von Blon from the Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Sure, thank you Chairman. If it's okay with you, I'd propose to add items A, I, and J together. They both involve the same advisory board. Madam Clerk, read this. Item I would be accepting the resignation of Kim Von Blon from the, it's Commissioner Bluebaugh's appointment to the Mental Health Advisory Board. Item J would be a resolution appointing Tiffany Stokes to the same board as recommended by Commissioner Wise. Recommended action for item I is to accept the resignation. Item J is to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
I think you could just make a joint motion to take the recommended action on both.
Two items, I and J. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, and I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve items I and J.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, and Tiffany, our county clerk here is here. Kelly Arnold, he can swear he in.
All right, good morning, Commissioner.
Hey, good morning.
Please raise your hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks for this opportunity. I'm really excited to sit on this board and do my part. Tiffany, thank you so much. We have a relationship outside of anything local government, but through business, and you're a leader and a driver, and I know that you'll make a great impact with your background, actually working with comp care in the past, and I'm just so thankful you're willing to serve. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you. Okay, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Yep. And Tiffany, thank you very much. I know you've been, you know, working through the community for several years, so I really appreciate you stepping up and taking on this additional role.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item K, resolution appointing Madeline La Forge to the Cedric County First District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner. Or, Justin Wagner.
Thank you. This resolution would appoint Madeline La Forge to Commissioner Meitzner's Citizens' Advisory Board positions, the student position specifically. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Wonderful, yeah, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we went through a pretty good process to fill the position of our high school student member of the advisory board, and after, after good interviews, Madeline La Forge has agreed to serve on this, and we're really grateful to have her. And so, besides congratulations, I want to make a motion that we approve Madeline La Forge to serve on this district advisory board.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And Kelly's here to swear he in.
Please raise your hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Office of Cedric County First District Citizens' Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Board. I want to thank you, Mr. Meitzner, and I hope I can be a great help on this board. Thank you.
Okay, Madalyn, you'll do great. And Madeline's parents are here, welcome to the meeting, and so, and Linda Baker's gonna say hi to you if you wanted to take a tour of the offices, but respectful of the time. So, thanks Maddie, looking forward to having you serve.
Really good, thanks Madeline for serving.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, resolution appointing Brendan McGreevy to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you Chairman. This item would appoint Brendan McGreevy to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. It's recommended by Commissioner Meitzner. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if Brendan's in the off, we've talked on the phone a few times, I don't see him here, present, that I know of, but after interviews again, Brendan would fit this role and had a lot of interest in it, and I'm glad that he's agreed to serve. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Brendan McGreevy to the First District Representative on Aging and Physical Disabilities Board.
Yep, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, very good, thank you. And as we're moving through these, if, when this is called, if you're here on any of these items, Kelly Arnold will swear he in, and you can just make your way over here to him as your item is being called. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item N, resolution appointing Trina Morgan to the Cedric County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Items M, N, O, and P are all the same advisory boards, if it's okay with you, I'd propose taking those up together. Madam Clerk, read item M. Item N is a reappointment of Cassandra Sines to this board. Item O is a resolution reappointing Dean Iswanger, and item P is a resolution appointing Sarah Snavely. And respectively, those are, items M and N are recommended by Commissioner Bluebaugh. Item O is recommended by Chairman Beatty, as is item P. Recommended action is to adopt all four of those resolutions.
Okay, just for clarity, we're looking at items M, N, O, and P, all of them to the Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, a wonderful board that does incredible work, very grateful for those that are willing to sign up here. So, with that being said, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolutions and approve the appointments in item M, N, O, and P. Second. A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, and we have a group here for Kelly Arnold.
Just kind of a little half circle. All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Office of Cedric County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, so help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'd like to jump up first.
Chairman Beatty and Commissioner Bluebaugh, thank you for allowing me to serve again on this advisory board, being the mom of two children with intellectual disabilities. It's an honor to be able to have a voice in this arena, so thank you.
Good, well, we're honored for you to serve. Thank you so much.
I'm Trina Morgan, and I agree, I'm also the mom of two adult sons with disabilities, and I live in Goddard, and so, a thriving community, as you heard earlier today, but as a parent, I am incredibly proud to serve on this board and hopefully help Cedric County learn a little bit more about people with disabilities, so thank you.
Very good, yeah.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be part of this board, and I have two boys who were recently diagnosed with a progressive and terminal Duchenne muscular dystrophy, and so, I am glad to be able to add my voice, my experience, and the knowledge that I have.
Yes, very good. Okay, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you Chairman. I appreciate each of you sharing your personal stories and stepping up and trying to make a difference for others. Thank you very much.
Yeah, again, thank you. This board does incredible work, and there's incredible challenges within the system that we're gonna have to navigate together, so your advice and you helping us to navigate this system and advocate for the people in this community that need our help and need these services is gonna be really, really important, so I'm excited to work with you guys, and excited to work with this board. Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have some other appointments on the fire agenda, so what I'm gonna do now is pause the county commission meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for Wednesday, May 7, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Yeah, we had no one sign up for public agenda for the fire meeting. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of March 26, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, all Commissioners were present for this meeting. Any questions or comments on the, on the meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the fire meeting minutes of March 26, 2025.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, on to appointments. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item B, resolution reappointing Susie Sutton to the Cedric County Fire District Number One Steering Council.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Items B, C, and D are all reappointments to the Fire Steering Council. Madam Clerk, read item B. Item C is a reappointment of William Bryant to the position as nominated by Textur on Aviation. We have an aircraft-specific position on that within the resolution. Item D is a resolution reappointing Katie Jackman-Tindall to this, to this board as recommended by Fire Chief Doug Williams. The recommended action on all three of these items is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioners, we have heard from our county council on all three of these items. I'll move to approve the resolutions for items B, C, and D. Second. A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Susie Sutton had emailed us and let her know that, let us know that she couldn't be here today, so the county clerk's office get in touch with her and William Bryant, but we have Katie here today, right? Okay, wonderful.
All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Fire District Number One Steering Council, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the Commission, the Fire Board, for this reappointment, and special thanks to Chief Doug Williams for having the confidence in me to appoint me as the at-large member, as the chair of the committee currently. I look forward to increased communication with the Fire Board and strengthening that partnership moving forward.
Yes, I was doing. Yeah, Katie, thank you so much for serving in this capacity. It's important to, to help bridge this, the communication piece from the Fire Board to the members of that Steering Council, and I mentioned it earlier, but we'll also be reaching out to schedule some more routine updates, not just with individual Commissioners as this happens from time to time, but the entire Fire Board coming before us, so we'll be in touch and scheduling those opportunities, so thank you for serving.
Thank you, we would very much appreciate that.
We appreciate you, okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items E and F on the fire agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? We're on the fire agenda, any questioners, any questions on the consent agenda?
No questioners.
Okay, none. Two items here, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Okay, a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Other.
Okay, on the fire agenda, anything under other. Seeing none, next item, please.
Executive session.
Okay, we have no executive session for the Fire Board. We'll move forward and adjourn the meeting for the Fire Board, reconvening the meeting for the Cedric County Board of County Commission. Thank you again for those from Fire that were here today. Okay, we are gonna make an adjustment here before we call new business items, we're gonna move the consent agenda up and call the consent agenda beginning with item U here. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda.
Okay, Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office recommending approval of consent items U through AK with the exception of AE.
Okay, Commission, we have the consent agenda, we are gonna pull item AE for discussion. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items U through AK with the exception of item AE. Second. A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, let's go back to item AE. Manager Stoltz, would you walk us through this item here, and then we'll open up for discussion and some public comment.
Thanks Chairman. This item, item AE is a plat. It's, this is a little bit unusual, we went, talked about this yesterday to some degree, we've never, can't recall a plat coming back, but this is, there's some unusual components that I think a name change to the addition was one of them, and then there's some ongoing issues and concerns about water, so we thought it best to pull this, have, I don't know, Scott wants to come up and talk through this, or at least be able to hear the public that want to talk on this particular issue.
Yeah, I think that's important, obviously, for the Commissioner of District Three, but I think all Commissioners felt the same, that we wanted to make sure the public had a voice in these matters. This has been a discussion that we, I think all of us watched the meeting with the Planning Commission and some of these discussions that have taken place around water issues, and this is not a zoning hearing, so we won't operate completely like a zoning hearing, however, I think we'll kind of follow a little bit of that procedure, and we'll invite Scott Waidell, the Planning Department Director, to come up and kind of give us a quick briefing, and then we're gonna open it up for public comment. Morning Scott.
Good morning. So, Scott Waidell from the Planning Department, and what I'll attempt to do here is give you a brief overview about the most recent meeting for this one, and then I'll stand for any questions, and I can provide more background information if that's helpful. So, as was mentioned, this is a plat, it's subdivision case 2024-59. Its title is Saddle Ridge at Andover, and it was formerly known as Indian Ridge at Andale Second Edition, so if you're looking into the history on this one, you need to know that you need to look for both those names. This plat is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of 37th Street and 247th Street, and by my measure, that's approximately a mile and a half south of Andale. It's residential plat, it's got 26 lots, and that hasn't always been the case, but it's coming to you with 26 lots. The property is zoned rural residential, which has a minimum lot size of two acres. The action before the county commission is to approve the dedications associated with the plat. The plat was approved by the Wichita-Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission on December 5 of 2024. At that meeting, there was discussion about the recommended conditions and a waiver recommended by the MAPC subdivision committee, so it's important to note that for plats, they go to a subdivision committee made up of seven members of the Planning Commission before they go to the full 14-member Planning Commission. Also, there was discussion about the names, both of the streets and the plat, and so that's why there were some changes that were made to that. There were discussions about water quality, about water quantity, and also, there was discussion about process in terms of if and when water availability and quality should be determined, and who should have that responsibility. The first motion by the Planning Commission was to approve the plat. A substitute motion was made to deny the plat based on water concerns and specifically the impact to adjacent properties. That motion failed by a vote of five to nine. The Planning Commission motion to approve the plat was successful by the inverse, which was, that vote was nine to five. At that meeting, there were approximately eight individuals who spoke on the item and expressed concerns related to impacts to neighbor water quality, impacts to neighbor water quantity, impacts to stormwater on neighbor, on neighboring properties, so runoff on the neighboring properties. The applicant's agent was there and presented information regarding reconfiguration of the plat to reduce the number of lots from 40 to 26 lots, well testing and results, proximity to other residential large lot subdivisions, and a proposed buyer agreement that would allow the buyer to, that would have the buyer release any purchasers of lots from any obligation to purchase the lots where the wells do not produce a certain quantity of water, and also, the applicant's agent offered information on revising the street names and the plat name. So, that's an overview about what happened at that particular meeting regarding this plat. There's quite a history with this one, though. There was a prior zoning case where the applicant applied for SF 20 zoning, which would allow for minimum lot sizes of just about a half an acre. If that had been approved, and they were anticipating, you know, that it would because they submitted it, they drew up a plat and submitted it initially showing 40 lots. As part of that zoning discussion, there was, again, robust discussion about impacts to neighbors, especially water quality, water quantity. That zoning application was denied by the Planning Commission. At that point, then, the applicant paused their application, and then, actually, it was deferred, and then they paused their application and brought it back later with revision to reduce the number of lots from 40 to 26. And then there are a number of different steps that it went through, through the plating process, but I think probably the most important part to know is that questions have continuously come up about water quantity and water quality through this process. One of the questions that came up to the applicant was also, one of the reasons why it was deferred, was to inquire whether or not they would be willing, whether they could connect to a rural water district. The applicant came back and said that that wasn't feasible for a variety of reasons, but, so that is a brief overview. I guess I'll stand for any questions, if there's any additional information, it would be helpful.
Okay, thank you Scott. We've had some rather significant conversations on the, not just this specific discussion in Andale, but also the broader water and rural water discussion. We've convened some, several meetings now, and there's a lot of discussions happening around this topic. I, Commissioner, I am gonna open it up for public comment, and we have some individuals that are here to do that, but before we get to that, would you have any questions for Scott? I would just simply have one question, I don't know if it's Scott or Justin that can help me here. This is different, this is a plat, this is not a zoning. In a zoning case, we have some quasi-legislative authority here to make some decisions, rather broad approval-decline decision-making for the commission. A plat is different. The plat has already been approved by the subdivision.
By MAPC.
Yes. So, what is, can you clearly define, so we know what our authority and what the scope of what we're doing here is today?
Certainly, I'd be happy to do that, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor, as you've already noted, this is not a zoning action. A zoning action, it's a quasi-judicial hearing, you go through the golden factors analysis, you're tasked with making a reasonable decision as to the land use. On a plat, what the governing body's role under KSA 12-752 is really limited to accepting or rejecting public dedication, so streets, easements, things like that, that are part and parcel of the plat itself, it's whether or not to accept those dedications. The task under that same statute for actually reviewing the plat and seeing if it complies with the subdivision regulations and any other codes is left to the Planning Commission. In this case, as Scott mentioned already, the Planning Commission has made a recommendation, or ma, I shouldn't say a recommendation, in this case, they are the determination under state law that that plat, in this case, does meet the required code requirements in terms of subdivision regulations and applicable codes. There is case law in Kansas, it's binding case law from the Kansas Court of Appeals that says that if those subdivision regulations and other codes are complied with, then it would be improper to disapprove a plat, so I think that's something to note here, your discretion is somewhat limited under the confines of state law and court cases, and I'd be happy to stand for any other questions you may have on this, but I think that's useful information for you to know.
Yeah, very useful information, I appreciate that. Justin, we might, we might circle back with some questions as we get going, but I appreciate that clarity. Okay, Commissioner, anything for Scott? Okay, seeing none, why don't we pause, I'd like to open up for some public comment on item AE, it's a plat for Saddle Ridge at Andale. There are five individuals that signed up for public comment that we deferred here. If there's anybody else, we certainly want to open up, we don't want to limit discussion for this, so I'll just go in the order, and if anybody else has something to add, we welcome you. Welcome to the podium, there are five minutes. If you can give your name and address for the record, we would appreciate that. So, first up is Doug, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing names, Wegger?
Good.
That's good, huh? Hey Doug, welcome, we're glad you're here.
So, my name's Doug Wegger, I live at 24327 West 37th, that's the center of the top of this plat, and Scott did a great job running down the history of all this. Majority of the meetings, conversations that we've had in this process have been, since this is a unique situation, the response has always been, our hands are tied, as long as we meet the layout, it gets approved, it's pushed to the next person, and we end up here. You know, an overall outlook, take on this, I feel like when we leave the meetings, everybody in the subdivision and the Planning Commission, the ones we speak to, they give off the feeling that it's wrong, I know it's wrong, but there's nothing we can do. And what we're coming to you guys for is, we're looking for somebody that's looking out for the little guy, the one that's not part of this development. If these 26, 28 houses, wherever we're at now, if they get approved, we have 10 additional families right now that are on wells, so in an approximate footprint of a quarter mile wide by a half mile long, the adjacent properties, that's 40 houses, all drawing water from the ground, that's not over an aquifer, it's over, the way we get our groundwater is from rain runoff. In the last two years of drought and the Cheney Lake water level, that's got us really concerned, and when we ask what the, what are our options if something happens, there's nobody that's providing a solution to us, that we, if we lose our water, I don't know what we do, and we haven't got an answer in any of these meetings.[1554.48] I'm assuming it's going to be rural water. The district is a half mile boundary, the boundary line's a half mile from where this property is, but the cost would be on the developer, and they're not interested in doing that. So we're concerned about our health and our safety, because if we lose our water, what do we have? And I know you guys, your hands are tied, but if you can call something back to the planning commission to review. Cedric County has a domestic well water code, and that code allows the department, the M A B C D, to collect water samples for any water well for the protection and public of environmental health. Has that step been done? To my knowledge, nobody's tested the two test wells that they drilled. It just proved that there was water. With our experience, 50 years' experience of this area, the water that they drilled is high in sulfate. And speaking with the groundwater management district and the division of water resources, their recommendation is that water's not safe for stock tanks, for your animals, or even use on your grass, because it dehydrates and it'll kill your lawn. It smells like sulfur. If you're going to build a house on that and run that through your washing machine, I can't imagine what you're using to fix that. They recommended a house treatment system. That'll be great for the drinking water, but you're still taking a shower in it, you're still doing, it's a safety issue. That's what I'm asking for. If you can advise the planning commission to reevaluate this with the requirement that the M A B C D requires water testing and evaluates if it's actually safe for people to live in and to use, then that's what I'm looking for. We're looking for answers to what happens to us if this happens? What happens to the 28 people that buy a property with the, what was the word that they used? What was the recommendation? If it's good?
If they didn't get a working well, then they wouldn't be obligated by law.
Buyer beware. That was the selling point. Come try a buyer beware property. It's amazing that that's even an option in today's world. So that's all I got.
Doug, thank you. A few questions. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Doug, thank you for testifying this morning. When you were saying you would like to see a requirement for water testing, are you talking about a continual basis or just an initial test? When people actually, if you will, turn the well on as an initial test, what are you advocating for?
So one of the requirements, so the first round that this development got denied on, the requirement was that the developer did test wells to prove that it's good quality water. They did the test wells, but nobody tested that it's good quality water. They tapped into, they could have tapped into a sewage lagoon 100 feet down. They pumped something out, and they reported that it came out. So what I'm asking for is to verify that what they're saying is good water is good. These test wells, there's no documentation anywhere of what is growing in it, what minerals. From our experience, the water that they drilled into is not safe to use.
So to be clear, you're talking about an initial test when the well is brand new to see what type of water comes out on day one, but we're not worried about that in future years or whatever?
Well, I don't see a reason to not test ever. I mean, once you're pulling it out of the ground, it could have anything, but you know, the selling point to get this through to this point was that the water that has been drilled is safe to use, and I want to see that it is safe.
So are we, and you live there now, is that correct? You're one of the homes that's already basically in that, in the area. I would think that anybody who buys a lot there that wants to wreck a home would want to know if their water is safe to drink. So without us regulating that, they have the option of, if you will, paying for a test and reviewing those results. And when that happens, if it happens before they close or during the negotiation process or after they close, that's a buyer and seller negotiation between two parties. So we need to regulate that, is my question.
I don't know that you would have, it's a place for you to regulate. It's more of a bringing awareness to a potential buyer before they're 200,000 in debt for something they can't use.
So to the topic buyer beware, I would say that, you know, I think a good quality realtor would make some recommendations for a home inspection, or in this case, a groundwater inspection to make sure that the property that's being purchased can provide the things that the people who are buying the property need.
Right.
Or they have a clause in the contract that says if they can't get quality water, again, that's between the buyer and the seller.
Right.
So just to be clear on the history of this, we used to mandate water well inspections. It was very intentional by this commission to deregulate that, because I believe this is a private sector problem. I think it's a great idea, but we don't mandate home inspections. We don't mandate roof inspections that transfer. We certainly don't mandate driveway inspections or water well inspections. And we used to do that when the property was transferred. One of my arguments against that was if someone's lived on a property for 40 years, we never go in and force them to, you know, do another retest at some point in their future. It's in their best interest for their own health and safety to verify what they're drinking is safe to drink. And they can certainly pay for a water test as often as they want to. So we put this solidly back in the hands of the private sector on purpose, trying to deregulate the government, if you will. That's one of the big talking points, I think, in politics today, is trying to get the government out of the private sector, when they don't need us to regulate them, telling them things that they're basically obvious. And again, if you want to take the risk and buy, you know, and do all these things without testing, I guess you have that right to do that, but again, it's to your own risk as well. So again, I would say, you know, I think the biggest concern, if I understand, let me change my question a little bit. One of your major concerns is by adding 26 more water wells, assuming that they hit potable safe to drink water, they're going to be putting a load on that water table, if you will, and it may cause other people who have current wells that they're very dependent on, for those wells to go dry, because they'll lose their access to water, because we've essentially over tapped the ground. And again, I don't know if Kansas has laws that regulates how many water wells can go in a certain area. I think the, a certain area, I think the people who put these wells in, I assume that they are permitted, they have to have a permit to install a well, which means they're certified, regulated, and inspected to make sure that they comply with Kansas law. So if Kansas law doesn't have a, some type of regulation that says how many water wells can be within a certain space, I don't know if we can create that, create that requirement here. It does, I'm here reading the, I'm here reading that K S A 12-752, and it does talk about, it does comply with subdivision regulations. We are in control of subdivision regulations. We can change those regulations. We have done that in the past. But right now, the regulations, I don't think it mandates any type of, you know, how many wells can be within a certain proximity of each other and what type of testing has to happen. We've intentionally moved away from all that. And again, you did, and I understand also, you did say that the rural water district is available, but it might be very expensive to bring that in.
Yeah, they checked with them, and they gave them an estimate of 500,000 to tap in. They would, the line is in St. Mark's, and they would have to pay for the piping and the installation of it, essentially. So they estimated a $500,000 install.
That's about 25,000 a home. I'll do the math quick. Forty homes, that's 500,000 divided by 40 is about 25,000 per home. That's about right. Again, I think the people in the country, they get rural water, they run those water lines a very long distance. That's not necessarily unreasonable to get rural water.
And if that was an option, I mean, the existing neighbors that we currently have water concerns, we would die into it as well.
Okay. So again, and the other principle I think we need to reflect on here is what we call private property rights. You know, we are empowered essentially to, you know, to get out of the way the private sector. If they use their land in a way that's beneficial to them, again, I know there is a, property rights is a two-way street. I don't want them to hurt you in any way, but you're already there and you already have a water well, and the question is, why can't they come alongside and do the exact same thing that you've already done? You know, to the extent that if there's a detriment, you're both going to, you're both going to have the same detriment. I mean, so anyway, I guess I'm concerned about using a plat approval process to engage this discussion, because it deals with, again, regulations and private property rights. This is a really sticky place to be, and I don't know if I feel comfortable right now as a B O C C even entertaining the idea of not approving this plat over those reasons. And so I'll continue thinking about this, but Doug, thank you for your comments.
So in the long run, is there any liability, accountability in any part of this for all the stages that approve this to go forward if something goes wrong? Is there, who's, who gets the finger pointed at him in the?
This might be a question for Scott, but my, again, I'm not an attorney. I like to think I am sometimes, but I'm not. It seems like this might be a civil, a civil issue between neighbors to get this argued in front of a judge. And again, I don't know if that's the right answer or not, but as far as I know, we're following a very prescribed process from the government's perspective. Everything that has to happen has happened exactly as the government's prescribed. So I think we're following Kansas laws and regulations and subdivision regulations. And again, I don't, you know, there is a possibility that water wells would run dry, and if that happened, I would think that there may be arguments about whether those wells can be deepened, for example, and who would pay for the cost of that. That's, it sounds like a civil dispute that might be in front of a judge to make that, to make those arguments, probably.
Okay, Doug, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll keep moving. I do want to get some insight briefly. Why don't we wait till after public comment? I'm going to get a few people from Planning Department, M A B C D, some of your thoughts. I'm just going to say, before we continue, I live on, I'm 100% dependent on a well. I live out in the country, 30 acres. This is a topic that's very near and dear to my heart, and I will consider doing things in regards to the process to make sure that the neighbors of these types of developments are protected and your water's protected. I'm not certain that the plating process is exactly where that happens, but I will gladly lead the meetings in making sure that your water sources are protected long into the future, because I think, as my family lives on water sources that are well watered too, I understand the pressures there. And we have some challenges, and I do think there has to be some sort of discussion from the subdivision regulations and what we do in planning and M A B C D as to how we protect this source, this water source long into the future. So I'll happily engage those conversations, because you should not, your water source should not be, and your water rights should not be jeopardized from other private property rights too. You have private property rights too. So I'm keenly aware of that. Okay, next up.
Correction, sir.
Go ahead, Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to correct, my math was wrong, it's $12,500 per home. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next up, Lauren Reichardt. Hi, Lauren.
Hi. Yeah, you got my name right, Laura Reichardt. I live at 24630 West 37th Street North, and so I'm just north of the road of this development. And you had mentioned going deeper with the well, so I've been there over 20 years. And when I, when we first moved out there, the water was super hard. We brought our own water softening system. They could never figure it out, and never could. And eventually, the well just kind of stopped pumping anything, and so we drilled another well. Hard as all get out, too deep. Then we drilled another one, crazy high in sulfates. We didn't go very deep. So we had to do a third well to get one that was even usable. So I do have my concerns with that. So mine's a little more like water quality rather than quantity, but I guess that first well did kind of stop, so maybe the quantity, or the quality. Quantity thing was there all along too, I don't know. But we have two wells on our property, working one for the house, and we have a pool with a pool house facility. We're trying to bring the pool back to life. It died a couple of years ago, but the water that that well is pumping, something's not right with it now either. So I'm a little worried about water, and I guess my question would be, if you guys don't have any power to do anything about this, I guess my question would be, what can I do? Is there a form I need to sign? Is there some kind of a process I need to go through to make sure that if this development is detrimental to our water supply, what do I do? What do we do?
Yeah.
So.
Very good question, Laura. I would tell you that in the public comment, I think we're going to get to that discussion a little bit in this. I think we'll try to get through public comment and register your question, and as a commission kind of come back to that in a broader discussion of what some of these ideas and opportunities could be.
Okay, okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Excuse me.
Yeah. Mr. Minster.
I would just, you asked what you could do. You talked about writing a letter. There's nothing that would stop you from writing a letter to the county commission and to the planning department, just so you're on record, is writing a letter with your comment. Like I said, this is a, this is a really strange one for, I don't have a lot of the background, so I'm listening to all this, but I don't want to leave you hanging, saying I don't know what to do. Nothing can stop you from writing a letter. And I'll get into this in a little bit, at the state level as well, but, so we'll talk further. So thanks. Thanks for your respectful comments. Appreciate it.
Okay, agreed. Very good. Next, Raymond, I believe it's.
Roser.
There it is, Raymond Roser. Mr. Roser, welcome, sir.
My name is Raymond Roser, 24310 West 37th North. Water is the issue with this, planning, they shoved it through after three tries. We all have water issues. That's not the point I want to, actually, I just have a question, is if the board, the commission here approves this, and it goes through, and they build all these houses, and then I lose water, is Cedric County liable for that?
Yeah.
That's my only question.
Okay.
Who's going to be liable?
I appreciate the question. Right now, during, with this public comment, we're going to receive comment, and then we'll have a broader discussion.
Good. That's all I had.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, continuing on. Jared Sneldler? There it is.
Jared Schneider, 3400 North 247th. Me and my boss here co-own the 80 that are as north of this, or, yes, excuse me, south of this proposed development. We've had constant questions on drainage that they can't answer, coming off of our, you know, terraces. They're making a drainage ditch. What are we going to do with that four-foot drop? I'm probably one of the most familiar with all this ground, because I farm it. And this is taking money away from us when we have a very real problem of farming up next to houses. I don't know if you've ever run a sprayer. I don't know if you've ever had people come up to you and start yelling, what are you doing? Why are you this close? It just makes it very difficult, and it takes money out of our bottom line. The water issues, to answer maybe a couple of questions that you had, we originally contacted G M D Two, which is our water aquifer, or their groundwater management district Two there, and requested, when they had 40 houses on the first plat, that we said, well, if they're going to pull 40 wells on this, we're going to pull an irrigation well. We had a test well drilled. No one talks about that, because that fell on deaf ears at M A P C. It was dry. They looked at us and said, there's nothing here, don't waste your time. Okay, thank you very much. So we told them, they just look at us like, well, they drilled two, I guess yours doesn't matter. All the existing wells that are in the area of all the neighbors here are average 60 to 70 feet. They're 40 years old. The wells they're drilling on Indian Ridge One, the two wells that they're out here, the one's 140 feet deep. So that's telling me that our water is dropping. At what point, like you said, are we going to have to lengthen our wells? I've been having water there. It's, I've had two wells go out from it extremely hard. We don't drink it, we use it. I sent Commissioner Wise a detailed water sample that I took in 2016. It was barely made grade for livestock. The sulfors were so high. And I do have problems with cows being a little runny. That's what they said will happen with hard water like that. So there's lots of issues that have always been there, and this isn't going to help anything. So the development resources you guys talked about, Goddard here, being so thriving with them developing inside the city, these developers are coming right outside into the county, because it's very easy to go get a plat, not have to sit there and put city water, city sewer, let the city tax aid them. They did it right in Andale, on the north side, snuck that one in. Now they don't have to pay city taxes and got those people to move out there, and the city needs to annex that and do it. So they're walking out and doing it, because the county has made it very easy for them. And M A P C, their one waiver was, well, we're not going to pave the road. It clearly says to pave a road. Well, then they gave us some spiel of, well, that's kind of a loose term. No, it's either paved, or it's a dirt road. I've traveled them both. I don't ever remember driving down a dirt road going, wow, this is really good and paved. So it's just funny how their words and everything just kind of slowly make things happen. But they keep trying. It was denied on one acre lots, it was denied a second time on the two acre lots. They just keep pushing it through until they get the answer they want. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Lastly is Mark Vaughn. Hello, Mark.
Hello. I live at 2420 West 37th, right across from Doug and next to Ray. Water's a big concern for me out there. On those two test wells they drilled, that has me very concerned, because my understanding of the structure of the water in that area is if you drill too deep, you hit the sulfides. And no one has tested that to make sure that that's not what's going on. So us, in the neighborhood, drilling deeper wells, if our water well goes dry, is not really a good alternative, because we're going to be too deep. The second comment, who was brought up here, is there's no authority to take care of this. Well, maybe we need to start being a little more proactive. I mean, the first step would be, yeah, maybe we should start monitoring the water table in the area, in these rural areas, where we have really high developments. And it could easily be started, because most wells are in the Kansas Geological Service database, and we could go out and see what the static level was when the well was drilled and compare it to now, and we could have a quick answer of what's going on, maybe. But outside that, I'm just, if we run out of water, I don't know what we do. Our house is worthless. Does it get condemned, or do we haul in water by truck, or what? Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. Before you run off, I have a question for you, please.
Sure.
And again, I think with that many homes there, I don't know what the total value of these homes is, but it's got to be pretty high. I'm sure these are nice homes. It seems to me that if the average cost is $12,500 to get water to all of those homes, if that's the average cost, I would certainly be wanting to do that.
Oh, I would sign up for that in a minute.
So, yeah, and your house is not worthless. So I want to be clear, there is an option. It's not something you guys want to do, because you're happy with what you have. But if it came right down to it, the water was unavailable, I think these 40 homes would probably have another option. I don't know if the rural water district is going to speak to the 40 owners, but it seems to me that the worry that everyone's having, and by the way, in drilling well after well after well, I know the price of a well. One well might cost more than what the service would cost to go to the R W D. So at the end of the day, there is a much more sure solution for everyone if they would work together as neighbors, and if you will promote, if you will, a connection to the entire community to access the best, safe, quality water, you know, drinking water available. Previous speaker said that they use the water for other things, but not for drinking. I don't, I would not want to have a home where the water comes out of the faucet is not necessarily okay to brush your teeth or to drink. To me, that's not ideal. So again, I think there's an existing situation even right now, despite these 40 homes, that you have an option that would solve this problem. The collective cost of all the water wells, as you guys have all talked about today, the lady spoke about well after well after well, I can't imagine the cost that that was to find out another, you know, another $10,000, and you come back with nothing. to find out another, you know, another $10,000 and you come back with nothing. Then you try another $10,000 and you come back with nothing. It seems to me that that is not the way this should have been handled. I mean, at the end of the day, these 26 homes provides a new opportunity. Because if you divide 500,000 by the lots that are there today, how many lots are there right now? Pardon me?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six on the plat.
Twenty-six on the plat, but how many existing homes are there?
Uh, geez, sir.
Ten. Okay, so I got my numbers off a little bit. To take that 500,000 divided by 10, that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big price tag. And maybe that's why everyone's on wells right now because it became kind of unaffordable. You look at a $50,000 cost without these homes, I can see why you say, "Well, I might put a $10,000 well in and we'll get by." Because $50,000 is a lot of money. But you add in these 26 homes, now your math changes quite a bit. And you might say, "I'm willing to do this because this actually makes more sense for my family. It provides stability and security long-term."
That's not happening, though.
It's not right now, but it could. My point is, the neighbors ought to get together and talk about this and talk to the Rural Water District and see if there's a better solution for everyone. By the way, I guess I have a question. After the public hearing's over, I have a question on staff on some more details. But again, thank you for your answers. Appreciate.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, let's get to some staff. That's everyone who signed up for public comment on item AE. Applicant's agent is here. Is that correct? Let me correct my language. It's not a zoning hearing. The applicant's agent in the zoning hearing was also, is in the audience today. So we'd invite you to speak as well if you'd like. Good morning. Five minutes if you can give name and address.
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant, 315 Ellis. And as you stated, I did not sign up, so I'm going to let the planning commission decide. If you want me to do a short presentation.
No, I don't think we need that.
Just to be available to answer questions that you may have, whether that's now or after staff, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I think if you'd like to make a comment, that'd be fine. I don't think we need the presentation since this is a plat and it's not a zoning hearing. I think if you'd like to provide any comment to what's been said today, you're welcome to do that.
So we have done a total of three test wells on this property. And those test wells all ran 20 or 25 gallons a minute and they were very in depths of 80, 130, 140 feet deep. There is hard water. So the applicant in their sales contract for everybody that buys it gives them a list of requirements. On this specific site, they've added three items to help ease the concerns that are being raised. One is a release of purchase of obligation that if the water well they dig, they don't feel comfortable as adequate to supply them water, they will buy the lot back from the person or not obligate them to purchase that. They're restricting the amount of area they can irrigate ground with and they are strongly suggesting they do water softeners and reverse osmosis systems with that. 20 gallons a minute, in my opinion, is more than adequate water. This area is full of shale. So the different levels you find water out here, they don't, the deeper well isn't sucking away from the well that's 60 foot deep because that shale layer kind of impacts how that works. I did try to verify that a little bit with a geologist on my terminology, that we're not just going to drain it out. This is a tricky situation for you guys. And I fully understand the neighbors' concerns and what they're saying. I understand the legality of what we're doing. Subdivision committees, planning commission approves the plat, county accepts easements and dedications and you have every authority not to accept them. So that's why we're here having this conversation today. It's a tough situation for the applicant. You know, they did not own this ground. We went through planning commission as a contract subject to approval. Since then, they did buy this ground. We have brought the plat in front of you. Now they own that ground based on having a 26 lot plat. So that's a tough situation for them if we decide we're not going to approve this. Very much respect for the concerns of the neighbors. I'm not saying that their concerns aren't valid. We've got two subdivisions in this area that are there today. We have the Indian Ridge subdivision that had 37 lots. That's a mile, half a mile to a mile away to the west northwest. We have got the Hedge Creek Estates subdivision to the north that's a half a mile or a mile away. That's got 30 lots. Those residents have all moved in there in the last 10 to 15 years. I don't see those residents here saying, "Hey, we're concerned. We don't have water." Those 67 homes have been operating just fine with the system they have today. I feel this subdivision will do the same. With that, I'll be quiet and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Phil. Thank you so much. Commissioner Howell.
I'm just curious. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious. By having to write that language into those contracts, it is unsure to the buyers whether or not they're going to find good water. It's really unsure to everybody involved. Even the seller doesn't have confidence necessarily. That's why the language is in there. So until you drill the water well and you discover, if you will, whether or not there's adequate water, you're not going to settle that issue for each and every single lot. It seems to me, again, so changing this to 36 lots, counting the 26 new and the 10 existing, that's 36. That's about $13,000, well, just under $14,000 per lot. If you guys were to get together and you would have, you wouldn't have to have a water softener. You wouldn't have to have a RO system. You wouldn't be restricted on watering necessarily except for unless there's a drought stage, you know, some type of a stage requirement for the county based on water levels or whatever. But the long-term solution appears to be a desire, I guess, to come together and do this differently. And I don't think it's going to change my opinion today on whether we should approve this today. But just as an advocate for a solution that makes sense to me at least, why aren't you all getting together and doing $14,000? Because the water well is going to cost you six to eight or maybe $10,000 to drill a well. Then you add in the water softener, the RO system, and then you're not sure. And you're committing to something that may not even work. And then you may have to undo the sale because, and again, if you start selling these lots and maybe, say, half of them find water, it kind of ruins the math for everybody else. So really, the best opportunity right now is to get all 26 lots to go in one direction, essentially in plan to put rural water into these properties. And that way, my opinion is, it actually, the more people that participate, the cheaper it gets for everybody. Because the line a half mile away will be borne essentially by everybody who's a partner on the improvement. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to be opposed to the plat. I think we need to move forward. But this is just a matter of advice. I think for the developer, the seller, the homes coming in and the existing owners, it seems like there is a solution that is really good for everybody. And somebody needs to lead. Somebody needs to become a point of contact for all 36 homes and find a way to do this by talking to the district and finding a way to finance this for all 36 homes. I would encourage you to do that. I don't know what your comments are on that, but.
Okay. My first comment is, I think the developer is very comfortable that the wells will work. And we didn't add those conditions to the contract out of fear. We added those conditions to the contract to make planning commissioners and county commissioners and other people realize, "Okay, you have a concern about that. We're willing to do this and acknowledge this so that it's not buyer beware." All right? Everybody knows this in the contract. I need to do some more research, my aging memory on rural water. I'm not, I don't think we're in the district. So there's a two-part problem. One, we're not in the district. Two, we're far enough away from water that it's got an expense to it. I agree with everything you just said. You get enough people to bring water there and you distribute that cost. Everybody's happier, would love to do that. It's a two-part problem. One, if we're not in the district, then I don't know how you go about expanding a rural water district. And that's a state issue, not a rural water district issue.
What's the kind of average price point of the homes that will be built on these properties?
On the, I'm guessing, well, the homes in Indian Ridge pre-COVID were 400 and up. So today, that's going to be 600, 700 up.
Okay, so again, just to, if the rural water is available, it adds value to the lot.
It does.
And you're looking at, even if I'm way off, let's say maybe it's $10,000 for a well and $15,000 for rural water, that's negligible in my opinion. It's about $5,000 difference on a half million dollar home or more.
Yep.
I know what I would do. And it just seems to me that if there's a way to get a stable water supply that puts everybody at ease, I really think that that would be, my opinion would be a tremendous solution to this problem. And without that, again, I know, to answer one of the questions previous, previous speaker, I think this ends up being a civil matter if there is damages to other people. So I don't think the county's got any responsibility or liability, no matter what happens here. But I do think there's going to be arguments that could be made in a courtroom in front of a judge if there's damages. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Appreciate your comments. Okay, I want to inquire some staff. I don't know who's best to do this. I have Chris Labrum, director of MABCD is here. Scott Waddle's here from planning. Tim Wagner's here, who's got a lot of experience in this. Tim, I think I might want to ask you a couple of questions, if that's okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. We have two discussions happening here. And let me first preface this question by, and comment by saying, this is just one example of one development in rural Sedgwick County.
Correct.
This is not going to be the last conversation we have on rural water and what it's doing to rural developments. But, so we have quality and quantity. These are two conversations. They are separate conversations. I'd like to ask you about quality, but the quantity is really where my heart's at. Because what I'm concerned about is the neighbors that are being impacted by big density developments and their water source doing nothing. They've done nothing to impact their own water source. Other developments impacting their water source and the quantity of the water. Can you talk a little bit about the quality and the quantity and the concerns that you may or may not have?
Quantity is hard to speak to because we don't know a lot of information about. You get two different opinions. I've got geohydrologists that have done some of the safe yields in the past that said there's plenty of water in that shale layer. We've got GMD2 who says there is not plenty of water in that shale layer, that they're basically creating a sump. So trying to iron that out and even talking at the state level with the domestic water well program, they don't have a definitive answer for me either.
Okay.
I think it's an answer, but they don't have a definitive answer.
That's quality. Can you tell me a little bit about the quantity of the water over there?
Quantity.
That's quantity, yeah. Forgive me. Can you talk about the quality of the water?
Quality, there was a water test done. It was provided to the state domestic water well program. She provided me a copy. That's what I sent to you guys yesterday. There's no EPA mandates on any of those constituents. The sulfates are extremely high there, so are all the chlorides and the sodium. There's secondary MCLs, maximum contaminant levels for taste and odor, but that's it. There's no suspected health issue. Yes, it does cause diarrhea, high sulfates, but that's not a, according to EPA, that's not a health issue.
Yeah, wow.
It's a treatment issue. So treatment-wise, I don't know what it's going to cost them. It may cost them $5,000 to $10,000 for treatment. And that may be an ongoing cost because I don't know how often they've got to treat, service that equipment and all that, so.
Okay. Tim, that's helpful. Do we have anything, and I don't know who can help me here, subdivision regs for rural developments? Do we have anything requiring the developer to disclose water quality to potential buyers? Or is this totally on someone buying a lot to do their own water testing and?
Yeah, I'll just speak to the subdivision regulations. They do not, not in the subdivision regs.
Okay. All right, commissioners, any questions here? I want to just say, as we get going, these conversations, the water conversations in this community have been picking up quite a bit of steam. Your, this development, this plating and this development has escalated the discussions quite a bit with groundwater management, with rural water districts. I'm of the opinion, and it's to an extent a bridge off of what Commissioner Howell is saying, that in all these developments that are coming to rural Sedgwick County, I think we've got to find a way to extend city water, cities, plural water, or rural water over the best we can. I've even explored ideas. We do specials for a lot of different infrastructure development. Is there a specials opportunity here to where we can look at? I see this as a critical need. I mean, just underscore everything. I see the water situation. Quantity is important to me. And I see this as a, as an impending crisis for our rural communities. I talk to farmers in my district about what's going on with their irrigation wells and what they're trying to do and the pressure that they're now seeing compared to what it was 15, 20 years ago. So I know this is a pending discussion. We hear the city of Wichita talking about what's happening at Genie. We hear about the salt plume that's coming down from Hutchinson and invading northwest Sedgwick County before long. We hear all these discussions of what's happening. And I do think we have to get proactive. I'm not someone who likes regulation or thinks we need added regulation. It's not necessary. But when we know there's a pending crisis brewing with our water sources, we have got to be intelligent and creative and rather aggressive in how we deal with this to protect families like mine and yours. That by no actions of our own is our water sources being infringed upon and being put in jeopardy. So I'm fully in agreement. Although this is a plating issue and I understand the plating issue comes with different authority on our end, this conversation has to continue. And we've got to be aggressive. We've got to be proactive. We've got to be creative to figure out how we protect rural America and rural Sedgwick County with water. So Commissioner Wise?
Yeah, I think everybody sees why I pulled this out. It's troubling. It's complicated, but it is a reality. And I think that especially out in District Three, we're going to run into more and more of these rural settings having development. And I'm not satisfied with the fact that we have no answers. I also feel like there's nothing that's stopping this plat from happening. I think that the developer has tried to appease all of the concerns that they can control. So it is super, this is difficult. But with whatever happens today, and I think that we don't really have very many options because it's plating, I don't want the conversation to stop. And so I just want to kind of put everybody on notice that we need to try to figure this out. And I think that we need to be a part of the conversation. Again, it's not our responsibility, you know, it's Sedgwick County commissioners, I don't believe, to provide water to people. But we need to be a part of being responsible and planning for these things. And we know that there's going to be growth out there. We have to be at the, we need to spearhead this problem. So thank you for honoring my request to bring this out, to have this discussion. I think that it was really valuable, especially to the neighbors that are currently there to feel heard. The concerns are very legitimate. And there's something that, you know, we need to, we need to keep attention on this matter and figure out how we can help for the future people too, but certainly for the people that are there.
Scott, can I ask you a question? I haven't, again, I haven't visited with anybody about this other than learning on the fly here.
Sure.
Do we have a, in your history of, or maybe your staff, in your history of the water issues with the rural water districts, et cetera, and the drilling of their own wells, have we had these kind of issues pop up as complaints into the planning or the code enforcement world in the past?
What I will offer, and I will look to staff to provide additional information on this, but at one time, there was a requirement in the subdivision regulations for a water test to be conducted.
Okay.
That was a safe yield analysis. That was done away with. So it was put in place, was in place for a number of years, and then it was done away with because, I think because of the difficult nature of this issue, they did, at the time, the reason for getting rid of it was because they said it was not providing useful information. So I think part of the issue with water is the difficulty in knowing if you put it well in a specific location, what are you going to hit and how is it going to affect the others around it? Because we can't see it. It's down there. And we know that there are different things that interrupt and disrupt how the water flows. That's part of what makes it just so difficult.
Yeah, well, not to say well, but, so we, for you all, in the course of years and over the years, between the code enforcement and the planning, they review all kinds of updating national codes and impact on us. And I think maybe, I guess we, as a commission, could ask planning to go back and reopen that to review. Maybe there's better, more, better information today that wasn't around whenever this was not a part. I'm not, I really don't want to say what to do other than to ask planning commission with smart people to maybe just relook at it to see if it's worth putting into the subdivision regulations or not. I don't have a feeling. I do have a small history with the GMV2 and the struggles that they've had, particularly with the city of Wichita when I was on the city council and Commissioner Bluebaugh's there too. And there is not a good, in my, my observation is not a good cooperation between rural water districts and the divisions and some, a large provider. I saw where city of Wichita provides almost 18% of the Kansas population. Water includes Derby and a little air force base called McConnell. So it is important that everybody does work. I just tried to text, having had a response, but Senator Mike Fag out of Butler County had just talked to me about a month ago and asked me, goes, "Hey, would you be interested in joining a group about rural water districts?" Because I have struggled with, the district I represent is northeast Cedric County, so it's not near the size of what, of the challenge. But there is some growth and development there and the developers or just individual residents have. have, have trouble with their rural water, the rural water districts that, that serve that area. So I think Senator Fag was, was somehow it's escalated to the state level, include, you can imagine state level farming on western Sedgwick and everything that goes with this water challenge. Originally, I, I said, well, Mike, that, that's probably not my lane of traffic, and it's really not my background. But hearing what you're saying and, and seeing this, it's dangerous. I think Commissioner Howell referenced a little bit. It's, I'm hesitant to try to, to make precedent into this area without having, you know, this is the first time we've done this. We've never, I've never looked at a, at anything to do with a plating that says I don't like. A citizens group could come to us on, on anything. And if we, if we as a commission agree to look at the next steps in plating and saying, oh, well, now we don't agree with that plat, we need to send it back to, to the, to the planning commission. That's, that's incredibly dangerous as an elected. But I don't mind them all relooking at other regulations that are involved in, in subdivision decisions. So, but, but I, I think, and maybe you guys can confirm this, it seems like these, like the, is it GMV2? They seem to have incredible authority that transcends anything that, I'm not sure how much we can do even. I think these districts two, one, five that are, that in the water business, they haven't, that was what I picked up from Senator Fag, that they have incredible authority and including pricing authority, as you've all mentioned. I think when you ask for something, they can just say, here's the, here's the cost, take it or leave it. So there, I think there is some problems statewide that, that I don't mind working on the side to see if, if there's something I can, one of us or a couple of us could represent what Cedric County's facing in this. Maybe not what you all want to hear necessarily, but, but I hear your concerns, and I think the chairman said it right. It's, it's quality and quantity, two, two challenges. So anyway, thanks for, thanks for answering the question, Scott.
Very good.
And thanks for letting me make a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points. So I think it was two years ago, the beginning of the legislative session. Again, Governor Laura Kelly really highlighted the importance of water regulations in our state. We're probably not where we need to be. And so as, as a result of those points that were made, the, at least in the House, I don't think it's in the Senate, but in the House, they created a new water committee. I believe that's the first time that's ever happened in Kansas. And so there's a number of legislators that serve on the water committee. I think some of this might need to be legislated as a real solution. Again, I think that local government is struggling with what to do here. But I, I would say that the chairperson of that, of that water committee is in the South Central delegation. And it is a very, very important committee. They've had a lot of work they've been working on. One of the major focuses is like on the Alagala, Alagala aquifer, am I saying that right?
Right.
It's a word I can't say. But anyway, on, on aquifers and how it relates to the farmers needing water for irrigation of certain crops and things like that. So there's been a focus on that, but they're also worried about some of the things already discussed here, the, the salt plume and other things. And so I think there's a opportunity to talk to some legislators about developing some better state law that relates to water rights, how it relates to residential properties that are near each other. Someone who was speaking, one of our conferees, made a comment that they believe we need to monitor the water table. And I guess I ask maybe Tim or Scott, is there any rationale for trying to monitor a water table? Because I guess I understand if you move in any, any direction, the water table is drastically different from location to location. So I don't really know how you would make decisions on allowing water wells or not allowing water wells based on what we know about water tables.
You'd get a general idea. GMD2 has a lot of monitoring wells within their district. So they've got averages for years is what the water table does in the GMD2 district.
But even when you, even when you have that data, it doesn't mean that you can drill a well and hit water at that depth. I mean, there's, there's reasons that.
Potentially, that's correct.
I mean, okay. And then, and then someone, this may not be for you, but someone mentioned that, that, someone in staff, this might be for Scott. Someone mentioned that during the process of getting this to us today, that a staff member mentioned that, or maybe it was an MAPC member, mentioned this is really not good, but we don't have any authority to basically not approve this. So we recognize it's not a good situation, but we're going to move forward anyway. Can you validate that comment?
Yeah, I think that was actually a comment from a member of the public. And yes, I think that in the MAPC discussion, there was a lot of back and forth about what is the proper role of local government when it comes to water availability and water quality? And what is the existing process that's in place? And whether, and what was the process that was in place for the subdivision regulations? And so there's a lot of dialogue about where should it be regulated? Should it be regulated even as a question? And ultimately, at the end of that, I think the planning commission arrived at a place where they said, this is a system that we have in place. This meets all, checks the boxes. And so as you saw, it was a contentious vote. I mean, it was not unanimous by any means, but ultimately, at that point, they felt that they, that the applicant had met all of the requirements, and so they approved it.
So the members that voted no on that, do they have legal basis for voting no?
When it comes to subdivision plats, you always have, they always have the basis of safety. Safety is first and foremost an overriding principle of the subdivision regulations. So anytime, if that's brought up, and it should be brought up early in the process, if any, if any issues are noted, they should come up early in the subdivision plating process. And that is one reason that a plat can be denied.
Did they use this issue of potential lack of water as a, as argument for lack of safety?
Yes, I would, I, I would interpret their dialogue and discussion to, to yes, lead to that conclusion.
Do we have the same opportunity as they have?
No, I, I will defer to legal, but I don't believe that you do. And the reason why is because of the nature of state statutes and how the state treats subdivisions and plating differently than zoning. I think the state really sees, in my opinion, the state sees plating as a right of the property owner. And as long as they check the boxes for the local requirements, the plat is approved. And at this point, the planning commission has approved the plat. It is merely your decision about whether or not to accept the dedications.
Has a plat ever been denied by BOCC that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, my history with it is relatively limited. It would be about five years worth.
And I believe that plats almost always appear on consent calendar and almost never have a briefing. I would say this might be the first I've ever, the first or second I've ever seen that actually had a discussion in the public.
Yes, I believe the first one was wandering oaks, if I remember correctly, and it was due to specials and the financial process. Yes, the way that the process works now, the plats, once they're approved by the planning commission, there is a number of signatures that need to be collected. That is a responsibility of the applicant to collect those. I believe that process was changed to make the applicant responsible for that, at their, at the overall request of multiple applicants. So now they collect, take it around, circulate it, get those signatures, and then they present it to the county clerk's office, I believe, who works on getting it onto the agenda for the BOCC.
Okay, and this might be for, and I have, I know I have a little more question for you, Scott. Before I get to that, I'm going to ask you and Tim, do either one of you have any, any knowledge about whether or not there's a rural water district in the area that would serve this community? Do you have any knowledge one way or the other?
I don't know where the exact boundary is for the rural water district in that area.
So right now, we don't know.
I, I've looked at on a map, but I don't have it with, I don't remember it.
And I'll offer. During the dialogue, and I think it even came up today, I believe people have referenced that it's approximately a half mile away to the east. Part of the questions that have come up in the, in the dialogue that occurred at the planning commission, both subdivision committee and full MAPC, has been rural water district. There's been questions about the pressure of the lines because of the distance away from where the tower or source of the water is, as well as the cost was another issue that came up. And then with rural water districts, it's my understanding that the number of taps that they allow is also, can also be an issue.
In Kansas, at least in Sedgwick County, these rural water districts are, are managed as if they're like private utilities. Is that correct?
Oh, I, I don't know how best to describe it. I know that they, they have limited amounts of service that they can provide. So you have to be, they have to be willing, and you have to be able to purchase that.
I guess what I'm saying is if they needed more capacity, they could, they could add another tower. They could install another tower in another location. They can, they can make improvements to their system of delivery if they, if they wanted to do that. Again, it's a business, they usually have a governing board, and they make decisions on how to deliver services, but.
I'll defer to others on that one.
Go ahead.
I will speak, speak at a high level. Rural water districts are created within state statute, Kansas state statute. Rural water districts are not taxing entities. They exist by state statute. They have boundaries that are set, and they cannot service outside of their boundaries generally by law. They would have to have a lawful act to expand their boundaries, and I don't know the process for that. That's a lawyer question. Rural water districts exist, in Sedgwick County, several of the rural water districts do not have their own wells. They aren't pumping water, they're buying water from the city of Wichita.
Right.
Some direct buy, some buy through another municipality.
Right.
Because of their location. Their income is strictly from, they are not there to make money. They're not a, they're not a profit, for-profit business. They are shareholders. Their boards are made up of people who are members of the district and who are shareholders. And their sole purpose is to gather enough revenue to pay for the cost of the infrastructure, the purchase of the water and the delivery of the water. When it comes to expansion, somebody has to bear the cost, and generally, they can't afford to do that without taking out loans. Loans through KDHE or some other source, which they have to pay back, obviously. And so whenever you're talking about adding water towers and expansion of lines a half mile, a mile or longer, in a case of, if they were able to service this, this plat that's being discussed, and it costs a half million dollars to get the water line to the plat, then running water lines from the main line on the roadway into each of those properties is additional expense that somebody has to bear, generally going to be the, the developer that's going to have to bear that cost. And then the setting of meters and the cost of that is going to be borne by somebody, usually passed on to the home builder. So it's a little bit more complex than rural water districts or utilities that should be able to just expand at will because most of them don't have the revenue generation capacity. They have no taxing authority, and their sole source of income is, are the residents and very few businesses who, who they serve, who pay the water rates in order to maintain the existing infrastructure. And that's, that's about it. They're bare bones, most of them are bare bones operations.
So it's a bit frustrating to have to deal with this conversation today, not have all the data, and that, that's my, that's not ideal. So we're guessing some stuff here. But I would just say, based on your comments, if the, if the district boundary was, needed to be adjusted to provide services, unless there's another water district closer or that's in the other district, I guess. It seems to me that there ought to be an opportunity to adjust those lines if there's a need for it. And I don't know what the process is, but conceivably, this district could be able to provide service. If they, if they had to adjust the boundaries, they could do that. And if they wanted to provide services, they could add capacity if that's what they wanted to do. So I guess my point is, rural water district, again, they may not have the capacity right now. They may not even have a desire. But my experience and work with my rural water districts in my district is, they've been very responsive. They're, they're anxious to provide services to virtually every resident in their entire district.
Sure.
So, you know, they, they're, they're eager to provide, provide that service. It's not like you have to talk them into it. They're, they're wanting to do this. So a couple more quick questions, and I appreciate that. This might be for Scott again. Someone made a comment that over in Goddard, there's a bunch of homes that are connected to city water, city sewer. Based on my experience with Clearwater, I don't believe that's true. Can you please validate if they're not inside the city? They cannot get city water or city sewer, is that correct?
Okay, I, I'm relieved that you weren't asking about that specific situation. I do know, I'm most familiar with the city of Wichita, and the city of Wichita does, in some instances, provide water service to properties outside of this, out beyond the city limits. However, as part of that, the city makes them sign an agreement not to oppose annexation. So at any time, the city of Wichita will be able to annex those properties into the city as a condition of receiving that water service.
How far is this development from the city of Andale?
Oh, I, I believe it's approximately a mile and a half to the south.
Just throw that out there, there's another, another potential solution there. Okay. Then I guess I'm trying to wrap up my questions here. Since we don't have authority, based on some of the questions earlier, since we don't seem to have authority based on the interpretation of the statutes, is it possible we have liability if things go wrong? If, if these people lose their water, there seems to be a, a complaint between people who are harmed essentially by these new homes. Is there, what, what's my, how should I interpret the idea of liability when I have no authority?
Scott, we'll let Justin answer.
Yeah.
Trying to, that was a, it's a little difficult question to answer the way it was phrased. Commissioner Howell, I'll do my best. I guess I would say, first off, I mean, there was comments from the folks around this proposed plat. They're certainly entitled to reach out to their own private legal counsel. I'm obviously not their attorney. I reserve the right to advise commissioners in a confidential setting at any point in time. The question you've asked, I think there's been statements about availability of water and quality of water, that there is some degree of that. There's already some existing claims of lack of availability of water that may exist regardless of any of this plat. I don't say any of that to say that, that there couldn't ever be a claim. People can file lawsuits for all number of reasons. I think you've seen it over the years. I've worked here 12 years, I've seen lawsuits that had merit, lawsuits that had very little merit. So it's a difficult question to answer as to whether there would ever be liability or there could or could not be a claim. But what I, I would say is that the analysis on this I provided earlier, there is some pretty clear guidance under both Kansas statute and Kansas case law in terms of the standards that apply when you're considering these plats. On the flip side of that, that, that there are some confines and limitations in terms of where a board would be. And I know the case I mentioned was a Kansas court appeals case where they made it pretty clear that you have to have authority laid out in the subdivision regulations or other codes as to why you would deny a plat. And if it meets all those requirements, the action should be, it shouldn't, it's not proper to disapprove of. So we have some guidance from Kansas courts on how to handle that issue. So I don't want to say there's no ability that that could ever come up. I think the property owners around could certainly consult with their own legal counsel. Some of the other items on this may be claims that may not even involve the county, maybe claims, water rights, things along those lines, that I, it'd be very challenging to answer those and analyze those sitting here right now.
And you're not, and you have to be cautious because that's your job. But from my perspective, again, it was brought to us because we believe it's met all the requirements of the subdivision regulations. The plat's been approved by MAPC. I interpret that statute in your earlier comments, it says, based on that, I don't really have any authority to vote no. And I will just say, my personal opinion is if I have no authority to vote no, I don't see how I could possibly have liability for things that go wrong if I have no ability to vote no. So again, I'll just throw that out there, it's my personal opinion. My final question is this. The plat does define drainage requirements. The plat does define stormwater runoff issues. The plat does define what, what options they have for sanitary sewer for each property. And my question is, based on those types of things, why can't the plat define, if you will, water requirements? Or could it, if we wanted to do that?
So when it comes to plats and stormwater, first off, there is a requirement that they prepare a drainage plan and that the drainage plan be approved prior to the plat being approved. So in that way, the plating process kind of coordinates these other review processes that are related. When it comes to sewer and water, at this time, the water permitting is tied in with, and sewage permitting is tied into the building permit process and the occupancy permit process, just at a high level. The question, could water quality and quantity be tied into the subdivision process? Yes, it can. And in the past, it actually was through this testing process of the safe yield analysis. Again, it's, that one proved. Again, it's, that one proved, at, at the end of the day, people said it was not providing valuable results that were helpful, and it was costing people monies to do it. So they did away with that component of, that requirement in the subdivision regulations. I think part of the challenge is finding, if you wanted a test like that, what is the appropriate test and what would get results that the community would find useful?
I, I guess, and I don't quite understand your answer, because that test requirement was a requirement for transfer property from seller to a buyer. And, and to the extent that there is water being available on the property, the test had to be performed and the test results had to be made available to the buyer. I don't know, again, I don't know whether it was required to have a water well, if it was required to be disclosed to the buyer, or if it had to meet certain health standards to be, let's say the water was not, wasn't safe for, safe for drinking, but the buyer was aware, was aware of that and they wanted to buy the property anyway, it didn't, it didn't stop the sale from happening. In fact, there's no requirement to even have a water well, as far as I'm concerned. They, and to the extent there was a well, then it had to be tested because that transfer property, you want to make sure the buyer knew what they were getting involved in. It did not require testing for the transfer, it did not require testing, again, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think, even, even whether that regulation exists or doesn't exist, doesn't really have any, any bearing on today's case today, I don't think it has any bearing on this at all.
Correct.
I mean, even, even had that regulation still been in place right now, it wouldn't change what's in front of us today at all.
And Commissioner Howell, Chairman, if it's okay, I just wanted to, I think there may be a mixing of two different actions that were taken formerly by the board, tell me if, and if I'm wrong, I apologize. I think some of what you're talking about is the title, Transfer Inspection Code, which we had up until, I don't know, roughly eight years ago, nine years ago, somewhere in there. And that dealt with the sale of a property in the unincorporated area and whether it's sanitary sewer system and water well were, and we, we got rid of that code that was in place at that point. It happened, it would be triggered by the sale of a property and there was a required inspection. What I think Scott's been referring to is a change in the subdivision regulations that occurred, I think roughly four years ago, that got rid of the testing for the, what was called the safe yield analysis for groundwater management district number two, and there was a component to that, that was within the subdivision regulations. So there are two different actions that kind of intersect in some ways, but they're, they're not, not directly related, they're different things. I hope that helps maybe some, but.
I guess, I will draw my question, but I guess my, my comment is, whether that regulation was in place right now or not, it doesn't change this case in any way. I, I don't think, I don't think that has any bearing on this. So it's been a discussion today whether that regulation was changed four years ago or not, I don't think it has any bearing on this case. I'll just say that I'm ready, I'm ready to vote Mr. Chairman when you're ready, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wise.
Okay, I just have two last questions. Have any of these lots been sold yet? Is this all just, okay, because we haven't approved the plat? Do we know if the rural water district has capacity to take on? Yeah, please, yes.
I was doing a little research, because I couldn't answer your question earlier on rural water district, but from what I can tell, looking at the maps, the rural water district service area is one mile or a half a mile to the east of this property. So the first problem is, we're not in their service district, they'd have to expand their service district. We never explored servicing it because we were not inside their district. So I can't tell you if they would have the capacity to service this easily, if it would take another tower, it was, we're at the end of their district. So I'm sure it's not sized up to keep going very far easily, doesn't mean it can't happen. All good questions, but my experience has been that outside the rural water district, they don't expand those districts, just like school districts, they just don't change easily.
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm not happy with, I, I feel like we don't have really anything that we need to do other than just formalize, and we don't really have any ability to change the outcome at this point. Justin, can you confirm, I mean, by, by not approving this, we're probably, we have some liability there, right? Because we don't have reasoning to not approve this?
I guess, similar to Mr. Howell's question a minute ago, that's a challenging thing to put a lawyer in a position of giving advice on that in a public setting, but I do appreciate the question. I, I think based on the case law that, that I mentioned, makes that challenging, getting more specific under the statute that's in play, I think I could point out that KSA 12752C does talk about the, the ability to essentially defer an action up to 30 days if there are requirements that aren't complied with, but in this case, the issue that's been complained about, there are no requirements in place in the subdivision regulations. I, I question whether that could be a realistic option, and the deferral is limited to 30 days, and you're supposed to state specifically what they haven't complied with. Again, haven't heard any information that something hasn't been complied with to this point. So I think that kind of answers your question, and I think there could be, again, just like I said before, on the other side, there could be claims and lawsuits, the validity of that, I'd prefer not to get into more in depth, but I hope that answers your question, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay, with all the dialogue, respectful for Commissioner Wise, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve item AE on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Can we clarify what the, does this just need to pass three two, or what's the requirement here?
Commissioner Wise, it's a simple majority vote requirement.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bluewall.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Before I make this vote, I understand the plating, it is not a good solution, there is no solution, there are no answers, and I'm going to keep working for an answer, but I will not vote in favor of anything that jeopardizes rural families and their water supply. So I'm going to vote no. Motion passes three two. Okay. Madam Clerk, we're going to move to the new business item, item Q. Go ahead and call.
New business, item Q, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Okay, Brent Shelton.
Good morning, Chairman Beatty, members of the county commission, I had to check the clock to make sure it was still morning. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, I'm here this morning to present the quarterly financial report for the first quarter of 2025. This will cover the fiscal activities of Sedgwick County for the first three months of the year as compared to the same time period in 2024. This report and this presentation have been prepared by our budget and accounting teams, and I owe them a debt of gratitude for making this all available. I want to remind you that the information is based on unaudited financial statements, it is subject to minor adjustments when the annual audit is performed. I believe you've all received a copy of the report, it's going to be made available on our website at the conclusion of this presentation. We typically begin this report by taking a look at our anticipated year-end results in terms of our fund balance across the operating funds of the organization. In the last few, couple of years, as we have looked at this, we've seen major changes in our year-end financial reports, reductions of $20, $25 million in fund balance. Those were a result of COVID revenues that have been, that were being spent down. Without those things this year, I think we're at a point where holistically or organizationally, we're at kind of a point of internal equilibrium, all things being equal. So we're only looking organizationally at a change in fund balance of about $1,007,000 across Sedgwick County. We'll get into some more details as we look at specific funds. To begin with, we do have five funds across the county that are supported with a specific or a dedicated mill levy. And across these funds, we show on this graph, revenues and expenditures. Now, a couple of things to note as we look at this graph, is it is a year-over-year comparison of the first quarter revenues. We want to see a big gap between revenues and expenditures in the first quarter, because that reflects property tax collections in the first quarter that are going to be spent throughout the rest of the year. The other thing that I would, would have you note is that it indicates pretty steady, stable increases in both revenues and expenditures over the five years that are depicted. So I think this projects stability, and this would be what we would anticipate this would look like. Looking at some specific line items within, in terms of revenues in these county property tax-supported funds, taxes are the biggest driver of revenue, and you see property sales and motor vehicle taxes, all with modest but healthy increases on a year-over-year basis. Our investment income in the first quarter of '25 is a little bit below what it was in 2024. Short-term rates were a little bit lower at the beginning of this year than they were at the same time last year. And in terms of other revenues, we did capture the revenues received from the sale of the sheriff's plane, that was a little different event in terms of all other revenue. Otherwise, this looks pretty stable, it's about what we would expect to see. Personnel is the largest single expense within these funds, and so we segregate those out as a result of the efforts that you've made over the past couple of years in terms of making compensation more competitive. We're seeing some increased costs in terms of personnel because of higher wages, therefore more positions being filled. So we would expect to see these wages and benefits increase while at the same time, overtime charges are declining. Non-personnel expenditures in these funds are identified on these rows. The first one is our grant awards, that's the WSU mill levy allocation. We've seen some reduction in inmate populations who are fee-for-service contracts for out-of-county housing are down. Medical professional services, this one has changed a little bit simply due to timing, we see that a lot. Let me look at the first quarter quarterly report, it's probably going to be about on par at the end of the year as what it's been before. We also made some additional transfers to cash funds, some CIP projects, and so that's where you see that about eight and a quarter million dollar increase in our other non-personnel expenditures in these funds. Taking a look at the fire district, you think of it a bit as a bit of a microcosm of the county, you're going to see the same dynamic in terms of revenues and expenditures in the first quarter of the year. We want to see that gap of revenues over expenditures because we have collected and have been distributed those first, first half property taxes. If we look at the, the key activities in the fire district, as a result of those personnel, those personnel costs are up a bit as a result of those pay adjustments. We're seeing some timing things in terms of equipment purchases, and revenues are up by about 6.3% or about $840,000 year-over-year as a result of a larger tax base for the I want to unpack this graph a little bit for you, because it looks a little bit funny, but there are some things to keep in mind as we look at the revenues and expenditures across those 36 different operating funds that don't have a property tax levy. This shows revenues and expenditures on a total basis, and then revenues and expenditures without COVID stimulus funds that we received in, over the last few years. The top line there, the blue line, those are total expenditures representing, they do have COVID expenditures in them, so they exceed our revenues for the same time period. If you remember back to CARES and ARPA, we didn't ever receive those monies in the first quarter, so they don't show up at all in this, in this graph. And then we captured, or encumbered, over $80 million in the first quarter of the year for the state mental health hospital, so that's why that takes off, that is an ARPA-related expenditure through the state. Some specifics, in terms of these funds, we continue to see increases in our prospective payment system fees for Medicaid reimbursements as a result of the CCBHC funding model, in the Kdad's revenue. This is basically a timing issue, we received some money in the first quarter of this year that we didn't receive in the first quarter of last year. So just, this will probably level out pretty much as we go through the course of the year. We may expect to see additional revenues and corrections, those state revenues, their formula is based on some of our expenses, and personnel costs have gone up, so we probably are going to see a bit of an increase in this on a year-over-year basis. And in terms of all other revenue, this is where we have captured the funding from KDHE for the testing for the sites that have the groundwater contamination. The key expenditures in these funds, again, personnel is one of our higher line items, so you've got the salaries and wages and employee benefits showing increases, facilities construction, that's where we have set aside a shopping cart to encumber the money for the state mental health hospital, and otherwise, we're looking at pretty much relatively stable expenditures throughout these funds. This part, or this graph depicts for us our quarter, our general fund comparisons in terms of our fund balance, and you can see that it reflects the property tax collection cycle, where we collect our revenues in first and second quarter, and those are spent down throughout the course of the year. County policy indicates that we are to maintain a minimum unrestricted fund balance of 20% of our budgeted annual expenditures, and you can see that consistently for the last six years, we maintain that fund balance. I mentioned earlier that our investment income in the first quarter was a little bit lower. You can see on this graph, the yellow line is our benchmark return, we saw those rates take off in '21, '22, and '23. As we have been able to reinvest maturing securities and investments, we actually crossed the line in the second quarter, and so we are hitting that benchmark at this point in time. We weren't quite there at the end of the first quarter. I would tell you that our portfolio, the market value, has increased from $385 million to $440 million on an annual basis, and our current yield for the portfolio is about, up about a percent from last year, 3.8 over 2.8%. Some of the capital projects that have seen activity were either begun or ended in the first quarter, the household hazardous waste facility expansion, this project involves the remodel of the existing facility and expansion to the north of that building. That expansion's going to add about 6,000 square feet, they're getting close to being substantially completed, should be done this summer. There were a couple of funding for projects for the west restroom and the east restroom projects at Lake Afton Park, one in '23, one in '24, those were combined in this project. So they're reconstructing some 40-year-old restroom and shower buildings, foundation work, a lot of slab work, and they're beginning to bring up the walls on these, on these Ridge Road, shoulder improvement at 53rd Street North to 69th Street North, a picture of that project is here, but this project acquired right of way, regrades ditches and adds paved shoulders to this area, it's still under construction, nearing 50% completion. The construction began in November, it should be done in June of 2025. It should be done in June of 2025. And finally, a bridge project on 100, replacing a bridge in poor condition on 143rd. So I would close with a point that the county's fiscal condition remains sound. Our revenues are most, mostly stable at this point, property tax. We're seeing those increases in those tax revenues. Across the organization, there's a good effort at controlling expenditures. We do have some pressures outside of our control. And I guess the first two on that line, just, there's a lot of noise out there that are making people react or respond to things that are just outside of our control. Our focus is to, to stay focused using the same types of tried and true things that we've done over time. Market volatility may increase or decrease the rates we're able to get on investments, but we're laddering those. We've got less than 12 months, up to 48-month maturities. So we're leveling those things out as we move forward. As we enter this budget cycle, your commitment to property tax relief is one of the challenges that we're going to try to help you meet. We, in light of having federal funding disruptions and potential revenue disruptions there, the state legislature keeps wanting to work on the process, a commitment to maintaining competitiveness for our workforce, and we still are in a hard insurance market. So we're expecting some potential increases in our property renewal. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Good, Brett. Very good. Appreciate the work that you do and your team, Lindsay, your team, everything that goes into this. As we're heading into budget discussions and budget hearings for the next two weeks, starting this afternoon, you know, everything, this is going to be a good little underscore of everything that we're going to walk into to understand and the financial condition of Sedgwick County and what we're working with. So appreciate the leadership there. I have one question on page, slide 14. Could you just make sure I fully understand the relationship between Kdad's and Sedgwick County and the funding of the hospital and how that's reflected on that chart?
The line there for facilities construction, we developed a shopping cart, which is a way for us to encumber expenditures throughout the year at one time. So it sets, it just encumbers that money and takes it off the table, if you will.
Okay.
So it shows up here.
So do we, we pay for expenditures and there is reimbursement back? Is that how that's going to work with the hospital on the construction fees?
We did receive an advance in December. We'll be billing for some more in the second quarter.
Got it, okay.
But we didn't receive any in the first quarter.
Okay, I see it. Okay, that's helpful. Thanks. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just again, I know you said it, but I think I missed your comment on page 12. That giant spike, is that, you said that was ARPA?
Yeah. This, that spike from '24 to '25, that represents the encumbrance of the funds for the state mental health hospital.
Okay.
And those are ARPA funds.
Okay.
So that, that blue line includes COVID.
Our, our ARPA funds were already incorporated in lots of other charts before this one.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you for reminding me that was states' dollars that we now have access to. On then, slide, slide 13, you made a comment that the state revenue for corrections is anticipated to go up?
A bit. They have a formula that determines the amount of money we get for corrections. It's based, one of the factors that goes into that are wages, salaries. Since those have gone up, I expect that'll probably increase modestly.
So I know there's been some discussion about just how to redistribute those state funds, and I believe that, again, that would be one way to do that. But I think I would make the argument, we have more cases than other places in the state and we would need more money because we have more work to do. So again, I, I've anticipated because the formula's been debated recently, that I think these, these dollars are likely to go down, not up. Can you, do we have something about that I don't understand at this point? I thought we were worried about the dollars going down.
I think if you would allow us time for some analysis on that, we can get back with you on that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, am I forgetting something on that?
No, I think this is still under discussion and we're working with Justin Watkins and his team, conversations with Department of Corrections and the governor's office on that. But I think we're kind of in a hold pattern to see how that formula works out.
We suspended the change, but again, it's still on the table. We have not changed it, I guess, in a, in a way that we are more agreeable to reflect it in finances.
Yeah, I think we're in a hold pattern. Correct, Tom?
Yeah.
And this is reflected on, looking back, yes.
On slide 15, I'd like to change the name from fund to balance to fund balance because that's a roller coaster. That was a joke.
Okay.
I have a question on slide 16. The, the low point there is, again, most recently, the low point was 34%. I know we have a 20% threshold. Now, two questions. Number one, what's the difference in dollars between that 14%, sorry, the 34% versus 20%? How many dollars are we talking about is basically above that threshold? And the second thing is, that 20% threshold is, is a self-imposed policy that we, we've even, we put that in place ourselves a long time ago. But that's a policy, it's not a rule or regulation or a law that we need to, it's just good fiscal management. We, we want 20%. She says yes. So how much money are we talking about, 34% over 20%?
So let's see if we can do the math. 20% represents about $66 million right now. So if that was roughly doubled and peeled back, let's say...
I can extrapolate that, that's fine. That's all I need to know.
Okay.
Okay. And then I guess I had maybe one other, I guess, I'll just make a, I guess I'll make a point, I guess our bathrooms are cheaper than the Portland Lou, apparently. And then, then finally, on to page 21, yeah, page 21. I think one of the bigger things that should be on this list here is, is legislation that's been drafted that is halfway through the process. I think we have, again, it's beyond our control, but I think maybe the one thing I would talk about more than, again, geopolitical instability is certainly a big thing, market volatility, those are obviously important things, but I think maybe one of the biggest ones right now is, is legislation that's going to change how we operate. And that is very real and it's already halfway done. So I think that that is a very large thing to keep our eyes on and, I know, I guess it says state legislation down below there. Let me just, I guess, highlight that. That is a, a very large thing that we have no control over at this point. Thank you so much. Good job, good job today.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Other questions or comments for Brett? Brett, again, good work as always. Appreciate you. Okay, Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the quarterly financial report.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item R, Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Fee Waivers for Approved 2025 Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Projects.
Hey, Chris Labor.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Yes, Chris Labor, MABCD adults. I'd like to also point out and thank Sally Stang for being here. She's the Director of the Housing Department for the City of Wichita.
Welcome, Sally. Glad you're here.
She is the absolute expert in the programs that we'll be discussing today. So before you, as an item, requesting fee waivers for approved low-income housing tax credit applications. A little bit about this program, it was created back in '86 with the Tax Reform Act. It's administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, as we all know them. HUD does tout this as very much a flagship program to include posting on their website and their materials that they consider it the most important resource for creating affordable housing across the nation. The money for this program is allocated through states. So here in Kansas, it is, the allocating agency is the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, or KHRC. Two programs that they administer, 9% and 4% credits. Though, a little bit about those are on the slide. The significance of this for us is the amount of subsidy that those are given. Obviously, the 9% much more competitive than the 4% because it is a much higher subsidy that is allowed. For the last several years, the state of Kansas has matched any federal awards that applicants have received. So this has made that program extremely competitive. Not so many years ago, basically, anyone who applied for a 4% was likely to get it. Almost all applications were approved and a good percentage, so you had a pretty good shot at a 9%. But again, that is not the case with the Kansas, with the state matching and with the level of subsidy that, that we do see. So with that, in the last several years, we've seen a relatively, or actually you could say very low number, of locally awarded projects, specifically in the 9% of 85 projects. And I think we could even increase that a little bit with last year's applications that we haven't yet captured. We've only received four last, in '23, and that is, we brought this before you all last year and also requested this same resolution and, and permission. And at that time, the previous year, the five applications in the local area had not received a selection. Last year, there was one program selected. Interestingly enough, it was not impacted, they received fee waivers due to this, but it did not actually help their, their application. And that was the Timbers, which they obviously provide very important housing for a very specific group of people with needs and something we are very happy to support. But that project removes older and dilapidated buildings on their existing campus and rebuilds them with new buildings. So again, a great program, but it doesn't provide any new housing units for the community. An analysis of this program continues to reveal that a lot of the margin where applicants are losing out is in the other support category. Those categories listed here include land donation, tax credits, sales tax exemption, and the impact of waiving utility and permit fees that can be gained and the points associated with those. So with that, a look at the projects and the averages that we have, we're proposing a waiver of MABCD permit fees. This would only apply to the projects in the 9% program, and it would only apply to projects that are selected, those that are approved, and also within the city of Wichita. City, Wichita City Council adopted a resolution yesterday at their city council meeting authorizing this as well. And they would apply, this, this would apply to the current year's application period, which expires on the 23rd of this month. As we have discussed previously, the MABCD revenue fund is very healthy right now. We're, we're discounting all building permits by 10% still and have supported this and a few other waiver programs, given the status of our fund. So we see no adverse impact to our revenue fund through this. I was at the Builders Association about a month ago, briefed our current budget status, our revenue status to include fund status and, and proposed budget. Included in that discussion was their concurrence with supporting this fee waiver for another year. So just to give a quick example of this, full truth in lending is if we were to somehow get all, get all four eligible projects in the city of Wichita and they were able to max out those, those numbers, it would be a pretty significant bill. Our fund could still sustain that one-time hit fairly easily, but it would be $485 or so thousand dollars. That is extremely unlikely. That's kind of a one in a million. The average project you see listed here provides 36 units with those numbers, about a $14 million total investment between nine and a half to an 11, 11 and a half million in construction costs, which puts us around the 41 to $47,500 in waived fees. And that's at our, that's at our full, we, our full fee cost. As stated, maximum of four awards can be given in any county. Realistically, that's going to be three. So three projects could be awarded in a county. There is a wild card project that can be approved by the KHRC. So again, it is possible that that could happen, but highly unlikely. So we predict that our absolute maximum fee waiver would be just shy of $190,000. Realistically, we would probably be waiving one project in the $47,000 range. We are currently aware, there are several applications. I'm currently aware of three that would potentially be eligible for this waiver, and two of those have specifically approached us with their plans to know exactly what their estimated valuation would be and what their waiver would be. One of those is a rehabilitation project and one is new construction. One is 42 units specifically, the other one, I believe, is in the neighborhood of 30, 30 to 36, so right in the average. And again, pointing out that, of course, if we get those, while we give away a little bit of fee money, we end up with a fairly large valuation of new property and new housing units in the community. So with, just a reminder that the Wichita City Council did see this yesterday. Happy to stand for any questions that the Commission would have, and our recommendation is that the BOCC adopt the resolution and authorize MABCD fee waivers for approved projects.
Chris, thank you. Appreciate it. Couple of questions on my end, real quick, or a question and a comment. Question, how did it work? It was Shell City Council, 7-0, what was the vote?
So it was actually on the consent agenda since this had been approved last year, and yes, no questions passed 7-0 with the rest of the...
Okay. Well, I, I'll just tell you, generally, I'm always supportive of permit fee reductions. I think that's good business when we can handle it, particularly in favor of strategic reductions that waive fees on affordable housing supply, which obviously I think is in desperate need here in this community. So I appreciate the creativity on this and the willingness to do this. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess a question for you, Mr. Chairman, would be, if you waive the fees on, on these specific projects, do we not need to increase the fees on other applicants for other projects to cover the cost of the work that's being done by staff for these projects?
I think that, that was a question directed at me. I think that we're giving a 10% reduction on all fees at this point in time. Is that correct, permit fees?
That is correct. So, and, and to your, to your question, Commissioner, we would not spread this to other projects. At this point in time, our fund is somewhat in excess of the reserve that we generally hold by agreement with WABA. So this would just, just be money not collected and would serve to reduce our current revenue reserve.
But the surplus was paid by, again, we, we adjust our fees every once in a while to keep those within a range that we are willing to allow that to stay in. But if we're, if we're spending down the money for these projects because they qualify as Light Tech projects, then that surplus, where it came from, was people who essentially paid more than they should have paid on other projects. So I guess I'm, I'm just concerned about the, the, you know, one person's paying fees that is for someone else. That's really my concern here. Am I not understanding this correctly?
You are correct that by not charging these projects fees, that in a sense, the cost is being spread over others and over other projects throughout our revenue.
And I guess I saw an email yesterday about the suspension of Light Tech support from the state of Kansas being in 2028. I assume that means July 1st of 2028, which means this, that's a change in policy that's again, already been adopted, but it, it takes effect July 1st, 2028, which would actually be their next fiscal year. So they've already essentially passed a budget for '27. That's what they just did in January, in, in March. So the following fiscal year would be the one fiscal year that this would, again, would fall under. Everything, everything they do starts on July 1st for the most part, so it's one year out. But they're intending to drop the Light Tech support from the state of Kansas. Do we know why they're doing that?
So, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner. I had a note to mention that as well. So that would be the state matching portion of that. So Light Tech will continue, but the state will discontinue matching funds, dollar, for dollar. We had first heard, and that was part of the urgency with this and some of the applicants, we had first expected that that would end even sooner. But we saw exactly as you did within the last few days, that, that July of '28 will be the drop dead for this.
So KHRC, can you put, tell me, what's the, is that a, a government organization or is that a nonprofit? What is KHRC?
And I'm, I'm going to defer to Ms. Stang for that exactly. I know that, I know that they administer this program and...
And while she's coming down, for it to be qualified for a Light Tech program, they're focused a lot, not necessarily on the lower cost, but on the, the, the energy efficiency of the, of the properties, is that correct?
I do believe those requirements, those are requirements within their package. So they have to be provided, and I'll let Sally clean this up, but they do have to provide affordable housing, and there are some code requirements that we do not necessarily require that they still have to comply with.
Sally, welcome.
Thank you. Sally Stang, Housing and Community Services Director for the City of Wichita. Thank you for having me today. Commissioner Howell, great question. KHRC is a quasi-government entity, so they are appointed by, they're created by the state. Their board is appointed by the state, but they are a separate legal entity, but they, they are that... by the state, but they are a separate legal entity, but they are the housing finance agency as well as the organization that develops and distributes the tax credits.
Okay. Something else?
Oh, I was just gonna say, and your question about the energy efficiency, yes. Built into the qualified application process, there have to be levels of energy efficiency. And it also, it puts on long-term rent restrictions and high levels of compliance for generally thirty years. Fifteen years is minimum. Most applicants actually agree to go thirty years because it gets them more points.
Did you guys happen to catch the news article in the Wichita Eagle that came out late yesterday? It's probably in today's edition, I'm assuming, on affordable housing and some of the, some of the strategies, I guess, to trying to create affordable housing. Did you catch that article?
I have not caught that article yet. Would love, I'll take a look for it.
I'll just say this. One of my concerns is it seems like there's no one that's truly trying to get all of the costs out of construction and trying to build, you know, homes that are truly affordable. I think the average home build price in the city of Derby right now is like in the four hundred thousand dollar range. It is. And again, even if you look at what we consider affordable housing, which is basically a lot of duplexes and twin homes and other types of housing like that, they're well above the two hundred thousand dollar mark. So we're really not, we're really not providing, if you will, what I consider to be affordable housing. And part of the problem is we regulate these to death. I think our biggest opportunity is regulation. I feel like what we're doing today is a drop in the bucket. And actually, I don't even really agree with it because I think we're shifting costs from one person to another. And I don't fundamentally agree with that. So I think the fees for inspections and all the other things we do, in my opinion, is a reasonable cost for any construction project to make sure it complies with whatever regulations we have. I think our biggest, the biggest opportunity is to reduce what we require. And there should be, I don't know if such a thing even exists right now, but a nonprofit builder. I know Habitat for Humanity and others, they want to be that. And I know that's one of their goals, but even the products that they're touching right now are very expensive, I think. And there may be some financing opportunities for people that they help figure out the financing side of that. So there is some things that they do that are quite useful and good. But what we need right now is for someone to build houses that are not that level. And I talked to Chris and I talked to Scott a while back about some ways we could do that. And I think we need a whole new discussion. To me, this light tech discussion is a drop in the bucket, and it violates a very fundamental principle in my mind of shifting costs that should be borne by whoever's creating the cost of government. They should pay for the cost of government. That's why it's called a fee. And we're shifting that over to someone else who's not qualified. Fundamentally, I just don't agree with it. So you're welcome to speak to that. But I was, and just implore you, Sally, and others, I think there's a much better discussion than we need to have. But I've had this discussion informally with a lot of different people in the community. And I think there's things we can do that would substantially lower the cost of housing. And it comes back to how we build neighborhoods, the width of the street, for example, the size of the sidewalk, or even if you require sidewalks, you know, why are we building these affordable homes with garages? And all that goes. There's things we can do differently. But we need to have a different discussion. So I just, I don't feel like this is the right answer for affordable housing. To me, it sounds like we're supporting an affordable housing solution. It's not a solution. It's not even close. So with that, I don't know that I want to support this today. You're welcome to make other comments, but I would really ask for a much better, more robust, more deep discussion on how to make affordable housing. I don't think this is it. Thank you today.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And, you know, this is something I championed over on the city side, City Manager Layton, Sally, I worked with you, worked with Chris. We tried to look at opportunities that we could get more investment in the infill. It's difficult, the infrastructure, and I agree, we need to be doing a lot more, but this is, this is just, this is just a drop in the bucket, and this is something I feel strongly about. So I'd like to go ahead and take the, make the recommended, or take the recommended action to approve this resolution.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Chris, thank you. Sally, thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item S, consideration of item eight from the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts meeting on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Hey, Joe.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. As was mentioned, this item was originally recommended by the Board of Bids and Contracts on April seventeenth. Shortly thereafter, was deferred for review. Since then, that review has been made, and now we're ready to make this recommendation for your approval. This is for a one-ton, two-wheel-drive, crew cab, long-bed truck with a stake bed. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Allen Samuels of Hutchison Incorporated, doing business as Allen Samuels Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, in the amount of sixty-five thousand, thirty-six dollars. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, Joe. Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner, any questions on this specific item? Okay. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts relevant to item S on today's agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay. Don't go far, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item T, Report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, fire away.
Yes, sir. For the record, Joe Thomas, again, purchasing director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on May first results in two items that we're bringing for you. The first one is the twenty twenty-five B M overlays. This is project R one seventy-five E for Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction L L C, and this is in the amount of one million, five hundred, twenty-four thousand, six hundred, seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Our last item is the Agilent Revenant L C Q dash T O M in the amount of four hundred, eight thousand, four hundred, twelve dollars and sixty-six cents. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions on these as well and recommend approval.
Okay. Two items here. Commissioner, any questions or comments on these two items? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts for May first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Joe, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Federal Grants Discussion.
Okay. Making her way down to the podium. Lindsay, welcome.
Sorry. To learn to walk faster. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lindsay Porusso, your CFO. So yes, unfortunately, we have some new information to share since we last met, and I want to cover that. Also, this morning, we actually received some information from the Department of Justice on some additional details on how their grant funds may be used. So I want to cover both of those things and then talk a little bit about what other concerns we have heard. And of course, next week, you will receive your audited financial report later this week. Those auditors will brief you, and you will be able to see in some detail the actual federal awards, those expenditures that we did in twenty twenty-four. So lots of information coming your way in the coming days. So first, what I want to talk about is a U.S. Department of Transportation memo that was posted on the DOT's website that we were made aware of. So it provides some additional clarification on precisely how we need to look at a few of the grant awards we've got. And I just want to read a few excerpts because I think it's really important to put in some context. So first of all, on the second page of this memo, again, it's available on the front page of the DOT website, so it's not anything that is unique to Sudwick County. We didn't receive this directly. But first, it just says, "Whether or not described in neutral terms, any policy, program, or activity that is premised on a prohibited classification, including discriminatory policies or practices designed to achieve so-called diversity, equity, and inclusion, or D E I, goals, presumptively violates federal law." It goes on to say that "any discriminatory actions in your policies, programs, and activities based on prohibited categories constitute a clear violation of federal law and the terms of your grant agreements." It goes so far on the next page, page three at the top, to say that declining to cooperate, it expands into immigration as opposed to D E I, and says, "Declining to cooperate with the enforcement of federal immigration law or otherwise taking action intended to shield illegal aliens from ICE detention contravenes federal law and may give rise to civil and criminal liability." Further, that same paragraph says, "Federal financial assistance they receive from DOT is provided only to subrecipients, businesses, or service providers that are U.S. citizens or U.S. nationals and lawful permanent residents or legal entities allowed to do business in the U.S. and which do not employ illegal aliens." So as we continue to work with some of our folks who, obviously, we know Public Works receives some projects, there's going to be some additional scrutiny that we have to do through any of those contracts to ensure full compliance for use of those funds. I think it's important to note that DOT specifically says that they will vigorously enforce the law and that noncompliance will jeopardize continued receipt of federal financial assistance from DOT and could lead to a loss of federal funding from DOT. They talk about initiating enforcement actions such as comprehensive audits, possible recovery of funds. DOT may also terminate funding in response to substantiated breaches of the terms of the agreement, or, and this one jumped out at me, if DOT determines that continued funding is no longer in the public interest. It doesn't necessarily give us definitions of what that includes. And the very final line of this letter that's put out from the Secretary of Transportation says proactive engagement is strongly advised to prevent inadvertent noncompliance. So DOT has basically put us on notice that we need to be proactive in our measures to make sure that we don't have any programs, I want to use the precise language they do, policy, program, or activities that could be interpreted by the DOT as something that could put us in, I guess, in conflict with what they have stated. Further, this morning, we received information from the Department of Justice about out-of-scope activities. And so we're making sure that everyone who receives DOJ funding is crystal clear of these as well. And again, what you'll see in your audited report later this week is a list that will show you who's getting transportation funding now, also who's getting DOJ funding now. So we'll be able to tell you specifically what those dollars are. But for me, this jumps out as money that comes for JAG, for our internet crimes against children, for some of those things. So we will be in touch with those folks. But it states what are basically out-of-scope activities. That includes research projects promoting or facilitating the violation of federal immigration law, inculc, I'm going to say this wrong, inculcating or promoting gender ideology as defined in an executive order. They specifically reference that. I did have to look that word up. Essentially, it means attempting to indoctrinate, for those of us who don't know that word. It says, "promoting or facilitating discriminatory programs or ideology, including illegal D E I programs that do not advance the policy of equal dignity and respect, activities that frame domestic violence or sexual assault as systemic social justice issues rather than criminal offenses, generic community engagement or economic development without a clear link to violence prevention, victim safety, or offender accountability, programs that discourage collaboration with law enforcement, or oppose or limit the role of police, prosecutors, or immigration enforcement in addressing violence against women, awareness campaigns or media that do not lead to tangible improvements in prevention, victim safety, or offender accountability, initiatives that prioritize illegal aliens over U.S. citizens and legal residents in receiving victim services and support, excessive funding for consulting fees, training, administrative costs, or other expenses not related to measurable violence prevention, victim support, and offender accountability, and then again, as expected, any activity or program that unlawfully violates an executive order." So those are kind of the two bigger pieces of information that we've received recently that, again, will highlight the compliance that we need to do. To that end, H R and legal are coordinating to ensure and work with departments to make sure that we're not potentially jeopardizing any of those funds that come to the county. Recently, we had talked about how we receive about ten to twelve million in operating funding per year for federal funds. And again, that's operating money. Public Works was able yesterday to provide us some more details on about how much funding they receive for their projects. Over ten years, we've received a total of twenty-eight million dollars in federal funds for projects. That averages to about two-point-eight million per year, but it has fluctuated anywhere from a million dollars ten years ago up to about four and a half million dollars in twenty twenty-three. So that's why we can't give you a great per-year potential impact, but that's just those projects. Unfortunately, there's a lot of, as Brent described it earlier, a lot of noise about what's happening without a lot of substantial data at this point in time about what's going away. It's about as uncertain as it's been since pre-COVID. And so one of the things that was rolled out was the president's skinny budget. And obviously, we know that Congress is going to be working through that. But already, and again, I have no idea if this is based in fact or just conjecture, but we've already heard conversations about WIC, about the aging R S V P program that's got some AmeriCorps funding tied to it, and even Medicaid. And obviously, between EMS, the Health Department, and Comcare, Medicaid is a major revenue stream for the county, well above and beyond that ten to twelve million that we talk about in terms of grant funds. So unfortunately, no good news this week, just additional work that will be done by your departments to make sure that we are not compromising the organization's ability to provide services that are paid for with federal funds.
Okay, Lindsay, that's helpful. Appreciate the committee's work. Obviously, aside from Medicaid, Medicare, any of those types of human service funding revenue sources, what I heard you say is that we receive between thirteen and fifteen million dollars in federal funding in regards to departments like Comcare and aging and federal highway funds, things of that sort. So I would just, from my seat, I would just say, whatever we have to do to be compliant to ensure this funding, I think that the county needs to make sure we're working hard to do that. So.
Okay. Commissioner, is there any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to do some follow-up questions. Again, late last year, I think it was November, December, we had a board discussion regarding the, we were moving away from the D E I program, but we had talked about spending down some leftover money that was in the budgeted amount for D E I programming or whatever it was. And we talked about, there was a discussion, I don't think I supported it, but there was a discussion about essentially rebranding and hiring someone at that point to kind of wrap up what we'd been for the last number of years, like five years or so. What became of those dollars? Where are we right now with that initiative that was basically approved by this commission about November, December?
Well, I'll speak to the dollars, but then Tom can speak to the overall initiative. So obviously, that position was eliminated. There was no contract that was entered into to do additional work. It was that wrap-up work. So there are, I would say, no new dollars toward any new consulting work or anything like that in this current budget year, nor is there any anticipated to be there in the future. I'll let Tom speak to kind of the status of the initiatives overall.
So the committee was redefined as Unity Collective, and we put an order out in the last week to bring that committee down.
Okay. But again, so just to be clear, what was the name of the consultant that basically had really developed, if you will, a lot of our training?
I'll have Tanya come and speak to that.
Yeah, we had some training documents that they, I guess you should say Hicks Carter Hicks.
That's correct.
And they developed this training. And then I think we had a mandate, every employee had to go get this training. It was a little bit unclear what would happen to them if they did not take the training. So I think under, I think an understanding, they may not be able to work at Sudwick County. We had virtually a hundred percent compliance. I don't know if we actually lost any employees over this, but there was a lot of folks in some departments that did not really want to take this training, but I think they conceded to the pressure. And so towards the end of the year, even though we didn't hire a director or someone to be the focal point for the, if you will, the agency, we might call, you know, a D E I director or something like that. We didn't actually hire somebody. We did use the money for some rebranding or some retooling, I guess, of where we were. That was the discussion that happened last November, December. Am I off? You're correct. Yes. So what happened with that? That, I don't have that in front of me, but that money has all been spent, and that was all done in twenty twenty-four. Okay. All right. So this, just So this, just to be clear, the Unity Collective, they've been told that they are essentially been, again, disrecognized, if you will. And so if they want to continue doing anything on that, they can do this, you know, again, unofficially in some other place or something like that, but we're not going to facilitate them or participate from staff or anything in their meetings?
That's correct. They were told as of Monday afternoon.
Okay. And, and again, I know we had some, a couple of areas of the county that I think had maybe some ongoing concerns. I know the Health Department had some specialized focus on how they provide services to some of their clients and things like that. There was some, some effort to make sure that they were diverse and inclusive or whatever. Is, where are we at with that?
So you, that is a really interesting issue that we are trying to work through right now. There are two parts of the organization where their funding or, and/or accreditation is contingent on DEI initiatives. That is Comcare, CCBHC funding, and it is Health Department accreditation. And because of how both of those programs are administered, we fully expect that at some point there will be new directives that tell us to discontinue that. But at this time, those, we have not received notice of that. So we are, we will limit what we do to those areas as required until we are told that we are not to anymore. Because again, the whole purpose of what we're talking about is doing everything we can to preserve those dollars and not jeopardize the programs or services to our community.
So the directive, one of the directives we're dealing with right now is an executive order from President Trump. The other one is a requirement from whom to be compliant with those policies?
Both, both of those are through different executive orders, so both have been ordered by President Trump. And there is actually quite a few other executive orders that we're just not talking a lot about in these public conversations, but we are putting together a comprehensive list of those executive orders, and we will be attempting to understand the impacts of all of those and assessing every program within the context of all of those executive orders.
Is it reasonable to assume that the latest executive order, if it conflicts with the previous executive order, that the latest executive order would take precedence?
I would assume so, but I'm going to defer to your county counselor.
Commissioner Howell, you're asking, these are very specific questions. I believe some of these may be either federal statutes or federal regulations and questions as to whether they're superseded or not by executive orders. I know our office is working with other county staff and looking at these things on a case-by-case basis. The legality and the, the impact of executive orders is a much debated and litigated issue around the country, and so this is something that we're looking into. But I can't tell you that there's a broad sweeping answer that executive orders can override regulations and statutes and that, to that effect. And so I think that's part of what we're looking at is, again, on a case-by-case basis and working with staff, and we're in the early stages of that. So I don't think there's anything we can report back.
And the compliance for Comcare and the Health Department really is not about staff as much as about who they provide services to. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Both.
Staff as well.
It is about how staff provides that service.
I'm saying, in terms of our, who we choose to hire, if there's competition, we-
Oh, there are no directives related to hiring or anything like that, correct?
So hiring and promotion is completely removed from any idea of trying to establish some type of a certain diversity, if you will.
Correct.
We're not trying to get to a particular diversity.
Correct.
Okay. And then-
It's about service provision. You're correct. It's about the service provision part of that.
So one thing that Hicks, Carter Hicks did, if I understand correctly, was they, they worked with HR, and they reviewed basically employee policies, and they updated policies to make them, if you will, if you will, in, in agreement with, if you will, DEI philosophy. So there was a number of changes that may have been made in our employee policies that have that in mind. This has gone on, I think, for about four or five years now. So we've, we've updated a lot of policies, and they have done a lot of work to make them, I guess, more sensitive to the DEI perspective, if you will. Am I right in saying that? There was a lot of policies, and that was one of the, one of the motivations to update those policies was to make them more sensitive to DEI language, if you will.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheena Schmitz, Chief Human Resources Officer. Many of those changes that we made were just wording changes. So for example, in our policies, we might say he slash she, and we would change that to say they. So those were some of the, many of the changes that we made within our policies. So we still adhere to Title VII as well, anti-discrimination.
I guess, just in response to where we're at, and I did read President Trump's executive order on the demand, if you will, to move organizations away from DEI principles or philosophy or language, whatever you want to call it, if they're receiving federal grants. And that was a requirement to do that. And I think the, the language in that executive order was really, was really crisp, and it was very exact. So I don't think there's any confusion as to what is required. With that in mind, are we doing a complete review of everything we do across our organization to make sure we haven't missed something that might be interpreted as, that is basically promoting, if you will, the ideas of diversity, equity, inclusion over merit and skill?
I'll answer that for Sheena. We're going department by department, policy by policy, to make sure that we protect our federal money. So the answer to that question is yes. We're going to go, we're looking at the entire organization. Remember, we're 47 departments, we have independent elected offices, we have appointed officials, but we're going to go through every, every department head will be involved in this discussion. We're going to go through all documents, and we'll do the best we can to make sure that we remove any questionable language that could be interpreted incorrectly. Doesn't matter, we're going to try to get it out to protect our federal assets.
I'll just wrap this up and say, again, I think that review needs to happen in earnest, and I, and I think that this is a major concern, that we might be, you know, judged, if you will, by missing something, and we, we put funding at risk, and which means we put services at risk. And I don't know that it'd be just necessarily one grant, but it might spill over to other grants. And so once you, once you have a problem in one area, I think the damage that that could cause are uncalculable, I think. So with that, I think this review needs to be done in earnest. And I would just say, it's my personal opinion, and I'll just repeat myself from what I said last year. I think our, our standard for employees, when we hire and promote employees, is that we expect professional and respectful behavior at all times, without exception. We will never tolerate any type of slurs, racial slurs, sexual orientation slurs, off-color humor, anything like that, are inappropriate and will not be tolerated in the workplace. We have high standards here, Sedgwick County. And what we, what we expect is professionalism, respect between, between people and between, between our, between our employees and the, and the public at all times. If they can't attain that standard, then they can't work here. That should be our standard. We need to expect that professional behavior. And so when someone, you know, demonstrates a bias against someone because of who they sleep with, or because of their color of their skin, or their national heritage, or anything like that, it's inappropriate. We, we do not tolerate that type of behavior regardless, and I call that professional and respectful behavior. So with that, I know it may be some people are disappointed that the county's moving in this direction. At the end of the day, I don't think we really have a choice here, and I actually agree with what President Trump's trying to do. This is where we should have been a year, three, four, five years ago, when you hear stories about someone who has a workplace conflict that is based in the idea of some racial conflict or some, you know, if it be any type of, you know, if someone, if someone is not getting along with someone else because they have a difference of religion, ideology, or because of who they sleep with, or because of their age, or their color of their skin, or anything else, or their accent, those are inappropriate reasons to have conflict, ever. We don't ever tolerate that. And so we expect this professional behavior by all staff at all times. I think that's really, it is that simple, and I don't think we need to make it more difficult than that. I did, I did take the training last year. I was on one of the last classes, took the training, and I walked away very disappointed. This was not where we should have been as an organization. This was, this was exactly what's wrong with that program. I think that we, at the end of the day, having these standards that articulate, that articulated and that crisp is, is the policy that we need. And I don't think we need to spend time trying to indoctrinate people on what this document's trying to do. So I disagree with that document, and I disagree with where we've been over the last five years. I think we're moving in the right direction. So I don't know if we need to do something. Is there a motion that you guys need today to clarify anything from the commission?
No.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we're moving in this direction, and I'm, I'm taking it extremely seriously. And I, I, I think we need to, we need to hire and promote based on the best value to the taxpayer, the greatest services, the greatest skill set, the greatest, you know, the greatest services for the cost, you know, whatever someone can deliver, the greatest option for their taxpayer, we need to focus on, on efficiency. And so hiring and promotion need to be settled on merit and on skill set. That's my opinion. Thank you for the conversation today, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Tom, Lindsey, anything else under federal grants? Okay, appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Okay, anything under committee reports that need to be shared to the public? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Commissioner Blue Ball.
Thank you, Chairman. I know we had our en banc, and we haven't had a regular meeting, but I wanted to bring up, on April 15th, we lost longtime dentist Ronald Higgins down, dentist down in Clearwater. I think he was a dentist for almost 60 years. He's been my dentist for 30 years. His, his daughter, Dr. Sherry's Fresh, is my current dentist, and they're down there. I just know, they're, they've done a lot in that Clearwater community, and I just want to send out their thoughts and prayers.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner, anything else under other?
I would just acknowledge, and I mentioned it earlier, that we start our budget hearings this afternoon, as soon as we finish some executive sessions. They'll go on for about two weeks. We're going to have 46 departments in, to brief us about the 2026 budget, moving along. So that starts today. We want to encourage Budget Simulator, the community, getting involved and going to the Budget Simulator, accessing that, reviewing that, but also, please, watch these. These are, these will be, these will be recorded and being shared for the entire county to see. So we encourage people to see the, all the good things and all the challenges happening with each department in Sedgwick County government.
Okay. Anything else under other? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Okay, we do have executive sessions. Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay, we have two. We can't combine them, we have to come back.
That's correct, Commissioner.
So we'll do the first one, the 30-minute one?
Okay.
Which pleases the commission. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 1:15 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel related to management position, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 1:15.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll second it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blue Ball.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we'll be back, 1:15.
Okay, we're back from executive session. There was no binding action taken by the commission. Any other business need to come before the board before we dismiss? Okay, saying none. Off to budget hearings we go. This meeting is adjourned.